Hey Dave, do we know who Hobie is? I'm just not familiar with that.
No, I do not.
Randy Hobbitz, planning board.
Hi, nice to meet you.
I put my whole name on there, it just won't fit, so it's probably going to someone's screen.
Just want to make sure we're not getting zoomed on, that's all. Dave, any idea who we're waiting for? Kara's not attending tonight.
Uh, no, I was just kind of waiting for word from you folks. If you guys are ready to go, I will put you on the air.
Yeah, we're ready to go.
Okay, hang on one second. There you go, and it is all yours, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, March 16, 2021. Please direct your attention to Board of Selectmen member Larry Ryan for the Fudge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a joint meeting with the Planning Board to fill unexpired vacant term. Mike, do you need to call your meeting to order? Mike Corbett.
Yep, I called our Rockland Planning Board to order. I see that everybody is present. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It's also available live online at wrpsrockland.com and within 24 hours via video on demand at youtube.com/wrpsrockland. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. Okay, first on the agenda, community announcements. Oh, actually, before we get started, in light of the new open meeting, well, I'm just going to introduce everyone that is on the meeting. We have Larry Ryan from the Board of Selectmen. We have Rich Penny from the Board of Selectmen. Michael Mullen from the Board of Selectmen. We have Joe Maroney from the School Committee. We have Daniel Biggins from the School Committee. We have Colleen Forlizzi from the Superintendent's Department. We have Charlie Williams, Michael Corbett. Who else did I say? I said John Lucas, Dan Hobbitz, or Randy Hobbitz from the Planning Board. We have Kevin Henderson from Florida. We have Christine Sullivan from CDBG. We have Jen Constable, Assistant Town Administrator. We have Doug Lab, Town Administrator. We have Elizabeth Zaleski, Town Accountant. And we have James Wells, who is an applicant, I believe, for the Planning Board. Did I miss anybody? Okay, well, that was fun. Okay. First on the agenda, special town meeting warrant opens 3/16/21. Special town meeting warrant closes 4/5/21 at 11:00 a.m. Doug.
You just stole my thunder. That's exactly what I was going to say. So the warrant is open for the special and it'll close on April 5th. The other community announcements are just that the last day to register to vote for the local election is March 22nd at 8:00 p.m. I also wanted to highlight to the public that the town treasurer is going to be auctioning off a tax title property located at 49 Custer Street. We have a professional auctioneer that's going to be assisting the town. And that date of the auction has been set for April 27th at 11:00 a.m. So there'll be a lot of promotional materials put out by the treasurer and the auctioneer, but we just thought we'd mention that 49 Custer Street will be going out to auction. And then lastly, the Town Clerk's Office and the Animal Control Officers asked me to urge everyone that hasn't done so already to please get their dogs licensed by March 31st to avoid any late fees. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda, minutes, open session minutes of March 2nd, 2021. Want to take a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We got a motion, I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Selectmen Ryan?
Yes.
Selectmen Mullen?
Yes.
Selectmen Penny?
Yes.
And myself, okay. Next on the agenda, new business, Planning Board vacancy appointment, James Wells. Joint vote with Planning Board and Board of Selectmen per Mass General laws, Chapter 41, Section 11. Mr. Corbett, I'm gonna let you open up on this. Maybe just speak to the vacancy that he's filling, the position that he's filling.
Okay.
I'll let you go through your board. For vote, and then I'll go to my board.
Okay, we have a gentleman here who's looking to get on the Planning Board. He pulled out papers. Had everything, got the signatures, everything certified. And since we have a lot of business coming up, we just figured it would be very helpful if we could get him appointed onto the board until the election. That way, he can run. As far as I know, there weren't any other people that pulled out applications, so hopefully he gets elected, but until then, he can fill the vacancy and help us through the boards, because sometimes it's tough getting a quorum. So.
So I, anybody have any questions from the Board of Selectmen for Mr. Wells or anybody from the Planning Board?
Could he, could he just speak up and say hello to us? So first, we'll, we could see him, because you're showing on the TV screen for us and
Hello, everyone. James Wells. Like, like I'm Rockland resident, so thank you for the opportunity to help out.
Well, we're glad to have you. I, you know, we always like new people and always bring the different slant to the game, if you will. So, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
If we vote for you, I guess.
If you wanted to give a little background, might be a good opportunity to, to kind of let people know, you know, about you and, and why you wanted to do this.
Sure, yeah, I've, born and bred in Rocklands. We moved out a few years to Abington, big move, but back in Rockland. Three children, me and my wife Kelly, raising here, senior in college, senior high school and freshman high school. I worked for United Airlines the past 28 years, you know, active politics in my union and, you know, working with in the airline industry. So I've been mulling this for a while to get involved, which I've been traveling a lot and having had the opportunity. So with this year where I haven't been traveling a lot, I saw the opportunities and Randy might have twisted my arm a little bit. Time to get involved and, you know, I want to just help to help the community that, you know, I believe in. I've grown up and I believe in this town. I'm on the Town Dem Committee also, not to be partisan, but I'm involved that way, so just an opportunity to help out. In a non-partisan, got it?
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to appoint James Wells to the Planning Board.
I'll make a motion. A second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? I'll do a roll call vote. I'll go through the Planning Board first. Charlie Williams?
Yeah, yes, I'm in favor.
John Lucas?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Randy Hobbitz?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Mike Corbett?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Okay, Mike Mullen?
Yes, I'm in favor because Randy's in favor, yes.
Selectmen Ryan?
Well, I'm in favor because Mike's in favor because Randy's in favor.
All right. Rich?
Yes.
And myself, okay. Jim, welcome to the Planning Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Glad to have you.
No, Mike, you just have to adjourn your meeting.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to get a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second on that?
I'll second.
All right, and we'll go through it again. John?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
We'll get you involved too, James.
Yes.
Right, Michael, I say yes. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys, for showing up and then taking care of business.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next on the agenda, town meeting quorum. Town Moderator Kevin Henderson.
Yeah, Doug, do you want to speak first or do you want me to speak?
Sure, Kevin, I'm happy to go first. So, you know, Kevin and I, we're in regular contact throughout the year. And given the fact that, you know, we're not completely through the pandemic yet and the governor's state of emergency is still in effect. We still believe it makes sense to reduce the minimum quorum again, as we've done for previous town meetings during COVID. Again, just not sure exactly how many people are going to want to show up. You know, I'm not sure how many people will be vaccinated by the time of town meeting. So we think it makes sense to do what we've done in the last recent town meetings where we reduced the minimum quorum down to the minimum, which would be 15. But just highlighting again that it's only a minimum and no matter how many people show up, we'll accommodate them. We work closely with WRPS and the school facility staff to make sure we'll have overflow rooms in the event we need additional space. But that, in a nutshell, that's it. We've done the proper notice where in our previous Board of Selectmen meeting, it was posted on the agenda that it would be discussed and voted tonight. Maybe with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin to see if he has any additional comments on the quorum.
No, I'm just going to echo Doug, what you said. We've been talking while I've been away from Massachusetts, where it's a little more no, I mean, I'm hoping that the minimum quorum would show up as far as 150, which is in the town charter. There's a lot of, there's a lot of important issues that will come up. I do understand that people are so concerned about social distancing. But as you said, maybe by May 3rd, a lot more people will be, have received the vaccine. So I would encourage the board to vote for this. But in no way is it, are we trying to make less people come to town meeting. If 150 or more show up, I, we do meetings to accommodate them and and that's all we need is a vote by the Board of Selectmen. And before I sign off on this, Mike Mullen, I'd like to congratulate you for all the time you've given. I've been away from Massachusetts, so I haven't, I, I've watched you. And when you announced that you wouldn't run for reelection. And you're certainly one of the young people that we've always talked about running for office and getting involved in the town in many ways, both in the school committee, the selectmen and all the other endeavors that you were involved in. And I certainly appreciate and all the time you've given. And I wish you back, best of luck at your new job.
Thank you, Chief.
We we boy young people like you to get involved. Us old people are getting old.
Amen.
I know, thank you, Chief. I don't view you as an old timer at all. But, but thank you very much. I mean, I grew up with you at the fire station and you know, with my dad and we go back, our families go back and that means everything. Thank you for your son, Chief. Thank you.
No, you certainly welcome. You certainly deserve all the people that have
They just probably want me out of the head, Chief.
Assume that the board is going to take the vote.
Okay, yeah, I didn't want to interrupt Mike's retirement tour.
It's like the longest goodbye, you know?
Wait till next, next meeting.
Go.
So, so I just, I just want to stress because it's every time we've done this, we've been misrepresented in the, by the news outlets. Typically, the print media. Where it says that we are lowering the quorum so that we can get things by the general public, which isn't the case. We are simply lowering the quorum so that people are comfortable to show up and we can get the, the business of the day done with the group that does show up. But by no means are we saying people aren't allowed to come. The more the merrier. To Doug's point, there will be satellite locations if, if we have an overflow. And I mean, if, if the whole town comes in, then, then fine, we'll, we'll make sure that you're accommodated, you know. I doubt that'll happen, but the more the merrier. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to reduce the quorum. To 15.
15 is the recommendation, it'll be 10%.
Yep.
Removed.
In a second. All those in favor? Selectmen Ryan?
Yes.
Selectmen Mullen?
Yes.
Selectmen Penny? You mute, you're muted. Are you saying yes?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
I got you now. And myself, okay. So that's, we'll decorm to 15, for the minimum.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
No, you're welcome. Can't wait to come back to the beautiful weather up there.
No chili.
All right, next on the agenda, CDBG program waiver of municipals requirement, Christine Sullivan, Program Coordinator. Christine, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I just directed to the memo that we set up. If anybody has questions on that, if you'd like me to run through it. Just basically, we have, and especially during this time of COVID, I believe, a lot of people struggling. One of the requirements for our program is that town municipals be paid up. Real estate taxes, sewer and water. And having, in the past, having a lot of hard time with it, we've had to decline a client last program due to this and with more and more people struggling. We just figured we'd reach out to DHCD, the state, to ask if there's a way that per the program, we could waive this requirement. And they agreed, however, they requested that we approach the Town Board of Selectmen per case. So we have a case at hand, try to work with the homeowners. They've been trying to, to make these payments, but due to plumbing issue, of course, that caused a high water bill. And that they weren't able to take those funds and put toward their water bill. They had to put toward the plumbing problem. They're just not able to keep up. So we're asking if the Board of Selectmen would approve just waiving the requirement for the Community Development Housing Rehabilitation Program. Not, of course, the obligation of the homeowner to pay the, these taxes and bills to the town. Just a waiver from our program to make it no longer a requirement for this case. That they have to be current for us to assist them with the housing rehab needs they have.
Okay, I want to send a motion. Any, any comments, questions from the board?
Yeah, just one question to Christine, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
So essentially, the, the housing rehab funding that the resident is applying for would basically help to address the issue that is causing the higher bills?
They hired a plumber to take care of the immediate issue, but we'll certainly be going through the whole house to determine if there are any other plumbing issues and it wasn't properly addressed, yes.
That makes sense. It seems, yeah, that seems very logical to me that we would approve the waiver to be able to address those issues. So with that, I'd make that motion, Mr. Chairman, to, to grant, to waive that requirement. You know, I'm on a, I'm on a one-time basis. Provided that any further applicants, they come back before the board on a case-by-case basis. Is that correct, Christine?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor? Selectmen Ryan?
Yes.
Selectmen Mullen?
Yes.
Selectmen Penny?
Yes.
And myself, okay. Thanks, Christine.
Great, thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is Social Vocational Technical High School, request for debt authorization, Tom Hickey, Superintendent Director.
Well, Mike, I don't think Tom is on yet, and I was just checking my email. He's coming from, he's having another one of these exact meetings in another neighboring town. I don't think he's going to be on until about 7:45.
So that's, that actually works out well. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to move, move on to old business and I'm going to go take some things out of order. We're going to skip to the FY22 budget, which I think should make everyone in the school department happy. Get you guys out of here probably about 45 minutes, maybe an hour earlier than, than otherwise would have been the case. So Doug, we'll start with you for the FY22 budget.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Let me just make sure, yeah, I'm good. So maybe just to recap, I'm not going to go over all the line item stuff that we did before, because, you know, we're really talking big picture now at the, at the end of the process. So just kind of high level, you know. Just want to remind us all and then acknowledge that, you know, this is a difficult year. You know, we're continuing to have constrained revenues due to COVID. And we certainly received a lot less state aid so far through the governor's proposed budget that, than we anticipated, you know, especially as relates to Chapter 70. And, you know, this sort of reduced revenue is really being compounded by the fact that we have increased expenses in health insurance and our pension costs. So it's, so it's a bit of a, of a double whammy. However, you know, there is, there is some good news, which is we have some preliminary information from the MMA that's just come out on the Federal American Rescue Plan Act, what they're referring to as ARPA. And I'm going to share my screen briefly, just to show you what I've been made aware of. So, so this is a document that anybody from the public can get if you go on the MMA website. It's multiple pages. This is about a four-page spreadsheet. And you can see it's referred to as an estimate of the direct municipal aid distributions. So when you, in the columns I should highlight, there's a column here labeled Direct Municipal Aid Estimate. And there's a column here for if the county exists, and that is a yes for Plymouth County. We still have an active county government, other, some other areas, they're not. And then there's this total estimated aid. So if you scroll down, you see right here for Rockland. You know, we have this $1.7 million number. And then there's this 3.488 million dollar number that's listed under if the county government exists. And then highlighted again is this 1.774 number. So this is all preliminary and it's really unclear to me right now exactly what this means and how much we're going to get. I'm not sure if we're getting just 1.7 million or if we're also getting 3.4 million through the county. I'm unclear if that 1.7 is part of that 3.4, or if those two numbers are additive and we're actually getting both combined. So there's, there's a lot of details that have to be worked out on that. Not only as it relates to exactly, you know, how much we're getting, but if there's amounts that are going through the county. What are the restrictions going to be? What it can be used for? And then probably most importantly, how is the Department of Revenue going to require that we handle these funds? It looks as though we're going to be able to automatically put them in a special revenue fund. But I suspect we're still going to need to appropriate out the funds to be able to actually spend them. If you look on the MMA website, you'll see that it looks like the funding is going to come in what they refer to as two blocks. One block in 2021, where we are now, and then the second block in 2022. And we'll be able to use these funds all the way through 2024. So I think the good news is, you know, this is real. This has been signed into law. All that's up for debate right now is exactly how much our money, how much our share is going to be and exactly what the DOR rules are going to be for, for how we access it and how, how we spend it. So, you know, with that, what we're recommending is still to continue with our conservative approach and stay the course we've been talking about for a while now, which is to to keep this difficult budget that we have recommended, but to plan on a special town meeting in July where once all these ARPA funding details are finalized with the Department of Revenue and also after the, the state budget is passed. And hopefully we'll get some additional aid, like Chapter 78 through the Student Opportunities Act that Dr. Cron and Jane have been working really hard at. Hopefully, we'll get additional funding through there. So with those two extra amounts, we can increase our appropriations at a, at a special town meeting in July, which is essentially the same process we looked at last year. So I was, you know, hoping that we were going to be 100% done tonight. Where we'd be, you know, taking final votes, but, you know, I recognize, or we all recognize that the school department has a lot of concerns. You know, with the budget that we have laid out and, you know, there's been a, I believe, a discussion or a request about possibly accessing a stabilization fund. So what I, what I would urge is that we try to resolve it this week, because we, you know, we really are running out of time. And then I think given where we're at, we're gonna, I'm going to request that we have a special Board of Selectmen meeting next Tuesday, which is the 23rd, where we can finalize the budget 100% and then have the Finance Committee vote the next day on the 24th. And that's sort of where I'm at now. I'm happy to try to, try to answer any questions you might have. This is obviously here and can get into any, any details. And of course, the schools are here and I think maybe Mike, it might make the most sense to turn it over to them so that maybe they can provide a little bit more detail about exactly what they're looking for at this point in time. So I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, I think, well, that's, that's, that's exciting news, Doug. It's obviously, you know, we've been talking about it for a while. But to see it in writing is exciting. But I think first, I will turn it over to, to everybody that's on for any questions that anybody might have in regards to what Doug was just talking about. And that, that opens up for the school as well. So if anybody has any questions, feel free. Okay, seeing none, then I will turn it over to the School Department Superintendent Alan Cron for your presentation of your budget.
Thank you, Mr. Rockland. Thank you, everyone, for having us here tonight. We appreciate it. I'm going to share my screen. Can you hear me okay? Can everyone hear me okay?
Perfect.
Great. Just want to give, want to give a little context to our budget so that people understand what we've been through budgetarily since June of 2020 and has in mind some of the steps that we have taken to mitigate the situation that we find ourselves in budget-wise. First of all, on March 9th of 2020 was the first day that we shut down the schools due to the COVID pandemic. At that time, we created a fully remote model of instruction. It was a little different than it looks now. At the time, we were not grading children. We were not truly taking attendance. We were really all making it up as we went along, but we did create a fully remote model of instruction back in March. We distributed Chromebooks to any family in need. We gave out more than 500 Chromebooks before the end of the year and into the summer. We created a new curriculum at every grade level from pre-kindergarten through 12th grade. We equipped our teachers with technology to teach from home. We absorbed a projected $1 million plus deficit. So if you remember last year in March, the state released some updated estimates and then we in turn had to respond to that. We were all looking at having quite a lot less money to run the town and run the schools. So we absorbed a projected $1 million plus deficit. The way we did that was we furloughed 151 employees for a total savings of approximately $887,000. We furloughed all of our daycare employees, our before and after-school employees, our paraprofessionals, our nurses, our cafeteria workers, our drivers and our maintenance and custodians. And I just want to thank all of those employees who dealt with those furloughs. I think if we remember historically, that was at a time when unemployment was giving the $600 extra a week. Our employees did, made out fairly well while they were on unemployment, but it did save the district and the town $887,000. We then froze and rolled all of our eligible FY21 grants, which we, you will see is coming into play today. We renegotiated our regular and sped transportation contracts. So we went back to the busing company and said, look, we're not using the buses. We want a discount. And we, we did that. We opened food service, a special outside food service program. We're serving approximately 400 families per day. They serve breakfast and lunch. That started last year and ran through the summer and it continues today. If you drive by at 11:30, between 11:30 and 12:30, Adele Leonard and the Food Service Department are serving breakfast and lunch to our remote students. In beginning June, to June of 2020 to current, we established two educational models, hybrid and fully remote. We used a technology grant to purchase and distribute Chromebooks to all students pre-K to 12 beginning in July. That was $254,000 that we used of federal funds to purchase these Chromebooks. But I want and hope that the town is very proud of the fact that we are a one-to-one district. Technologically, we're that we are a one-to-one district, technologically we're extremely advanced. Our preschool students have Chromebooks and are learning to use them. So it's something that I'm very proud of for the school district, but I hope that the town is proud of as a town. We restructured every classroom and learning space district-wide, including our cafeterias and our gyms, which are being used as classrooms in some cases, as well as cafeterias. So they're serving multiple purposes at this point. We reconfigured our transportation program. So for school buses, we had a maximum of 24 students per bus. That included the driver. So we had to figure out how to do busing to, to meet the social distancing requirements. We reconfigured our lunch and breakfast program. So if you go, went to the high school, for example, and saw the cafeteria right now, what you would see is four or five rows of desks, single desks, where the kids sit and eat their lunch. They also have desks set up in the gym during lunch to make that work. We developed a remote week care program for the kindergarten to six families who are having trouble during remote hybrid weeks. So our program has students in person for a week, and then learning remotely for the, for the opposite week, and then they switch back. Many students were having trouble with their hybrid week. So using the McKinley Building, we developed essentially a, a study area where those kids could go on their off weeks. We could only accommodate 60 students, but we are providing that service to approximately 60 families right now. We purchased and distributed personal protective equipment to all faculty and staff district-wide. We established our own COVID testing program with the South Shore Hospital. This has proven to be extremely beneficial in keeping kids in, in school rather than being out based on being that, you know, being quarantined. And we adopted and implemented strict safety protocols in conjunction with the Board of Health. Each one of these bullets has, has a financial ramification, which is why I'm sharing them with you. Each one of these things costs money, whether it be time or actual money buying the materials. Currently, until the end of the school year, we are offering, beginning April 5th, this April 5th, we are bringing back 100% of our students in grades K to 4. And on April 26th, we will bring back all of our students in grades 6 to 12. That is ahead of what the Governor and the Commissioner of Education is mandating. We are adopting and implementing new safety protocols to make that happen. We are once again reconfiguring each classroom and usable space district-wide. That includes renting tents so we can have lunches outdoors. Lunches will remain at six feet socially distanced, whereas within the school and within classrooms, we are moving to three feet, which is allowing us to fit more students in the building. We are reconfiguring our entire transportation program. And we are reconfiguring our food service program as well. We're offering before and after-school care to families in grades K to 6. This is a change for us. We, we had pre-COVID offered before and after-school to families K to 4, but we've found we have the capacity to do it for grades 5 and 6. So for our younger middle school families, they will have the option to engage in before or after-school care. Now I'm going to turn it over to Jane Hackett, who is going to talk through the money. Go ahead, Jane.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I could share my screen, please?
You should be able to, Jane.
Is that sharing?
Yep.
All right, can you see my spreadsheet?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So this is the less exciting part, but I understand relevant this evening. So thanks for having us, everybody. We're pleased to be here. I was here with Colleen Felizy on February 16th, and I just wanted to recap where they were. Can you see where we were at that point? Is my pointer coming through?
Yes.
Okay, so at the Selectmen's meeting on February 16th, we showed that we had a slight decline in revenue from the town from the 26-2 to the 26-1 of approximately $96,000. We're holding our grant in circuit breaker in our utilization of revolving accounts level, and our total revenue was projected at $28,887,000. Our expenses, and this has not changed, I went back to our, the presentation of the 16th. These are the same numbers I presented to you folks on the, on the 16th. Our salaries, our regular salaries, these are our coaches and our extracurricular, our expenses and our sped. A couple of highlights within our expenses was that last year for FY21, this expense line had been cut. All non-transportation and non-utility expense line items had been cut by 50%. That's everything from professional development to pens and pencils, dues, registrations, et cetera. Sped was up 3% at 3.6 for a total expense of $31,153,000. This brought us to a $2.2 million deficit projected for the year. Expenses greater than revenues by $2.2 million. I was not panicking. We're totally, we're going to continue to work the problem, which I assure you, we, we are doing. My plan at that point in time was to plug this deficit with the use of the federal relief funds. SRR1 at $200,000, SRR2 at $1 million. And then I was going to use a revolving carryover from this year FY21 into FY22, bringing our deficit down to $564,000. So then, things changed again. So this is the next slide, and this is the Select, Selectmen's presentation of the 16th. And here's what we presented to FinCom last week, or this week, our last, our last meeting, our last presentation with FinCom, which I believe was last week. And you can see here that we've had a further reduction in our town appropriation of approximately $180,000. And Dr. Cron and I met with Mr. Lapp and Biz on last, on March 2nd. And we're given this number, I believe that was the same evening that you folks met. We again held our grants and our circuit breaker stable, and I kept our revolving stable showing a deficit of 280, a decrease in revenue of $282,000 from FY21 to FY22. I kept all of our expenses the same as they were from the Selectmen, and our deficit increased slightly by the, basically by the increase in the reduction here to 2.4 million. I further had to decrease our utilization of SRR1 and SRR2, and I'll show that on the next slide as to why. And the simple reason is just because we have to spend it in this year and for schedule costs next year, but I'll get into that detail. So our subtotal came to 1.7. Again, I'm carrying the $434,000 down slightly. I have no problem rounding that back up to the 500 for a projected deficit of $1.2 million. All right, so the next slide is going to talk about how I had this 1.2 here, and I only have this $750,000 figure here, which is showing the increase in the deficit from 565 to the 1.2 on top of the increased decline in the town revenue. So this is what we, Biz and I constantly talking to is our, is our relief funds. And the first fund that I list here is not on the other page, but it's money that we're using for this current fiscal year. This is the State Corona Prevention Fund. It's coming to us in two installments of approximately $66,000 each. We've received our first installment of $66,000, and how we're going to expend it is as follows. $26,000 for tents for the additional cafeteria space Dr. Cron just mentioned. $39,000 has, have been ordered for desks that we need in the individual classrooms, and $64,000 for COVID payroll. There's the COVID payroll is payroll that we had been charging to the CARES Act that is expended. So I need another source to fund that, and we're, we're funding some of the COVID payroll through the State Corona Prevention Fund. I'm using this money first because this money must be spent by this June. All right, so that's why I'm using this money first. The money I'm using second is the SRR1, which is the 200,000. How am I using the SRR, how am I using the SRR1? $664,000 COVID payroll. This is our $15,000 February testing bill to Social Hospital. Our projected additional costs from March through June for testing. This is Edusier, our high school remote learning contract. This is where our high school remote learners are using the platform that they're using. It's a contractual arrangement. And then these are estimates for how much we're, we need to buy for additional PPE and how much we need to pay for storage. So this exhausted minus 9,000. Our SRR1, 200,000 that I had been planning on utilizing to plug that gap. Then here's SRR2. And here is the million dollars that we're receiving for SRR2. It's important to note that we haven't, not yet applied for utilization of these funds. It's something Ms. Fordlizy and I will be doing. I believe we have to do it by the 27th of March. And these funds I'm using last because we can use them last, similar to the money that they just discussed. I believe we can use this all the way through September of 2024, just three and a half years from now. And we're planning on using it virtually all now. $750,000 to plug the FY22 deficit that we just spoke about, $100,000 to buy a math curriculum. And I'd like to point out that this is the only expenditure that we're listing here that is targeted towards either identifying or remediating learning loss. All right, or, and $125,000 for CNAs, which we currently have, and we have a CNA in each of our building right now. Well, one we don't, we have a hiring freeze, and one left, they haven't replaced it. So currently we have four, but with students not being vaccinated, in all likelihood, by the beginning of the school year, it is probable that we will need to have two separate rooms, one the regular nursing room and one a COVID room, and they each need to be staffed by two different personnel, and we're staffing that currently with CNAs. So those are the utilization of our known available relief funds. All right, we are awaiting what we're going, we're referring hypothetically as SRR3, which is money that's going to come directly through DESI under the Title I formula to directly to school districts in the latest federal relief package. So I've heard some questions sort of in, in the background and on camera on grants and revolving. So I wanted to just briefly discuss this. The FY21 budget, our current budget. We have $1,068,000 in grants identified. You'll notice that I actually have budgeted 1.121. And the reason why that is, is because I froze and carried forward grants. And I'm applying 100,000, approximately 100,000 of what I froze in FY20 into FY21, which is why the grant number is higher. And my intention is to have the other $100,000 available for the FY22 for the 100,000. So these are our grants. All right, they're on file here, they're on file, you know, with, with Donna Capless, who is our grant administrator, and they're on file with the town accountant, and they are audited each and every year. And so the Early Childhood Grant, we spend in our preschool. Our Title I is for low-income elementary. It funds three teachers and three powers and a part in a secretary. And idea is a sped grant that we use to pay for our sped tuitions and our summer school program. Title II A is for professional development of, of teachers, especially driven towards low-income needs. And Title IV is our technology grant. So our grants and our revolving continuing. This year, we budgeted using $900,000 in our current year of our grants and revolving. These were made up predominantly overwhelmingly of school choice. Right? We're also going to use some of our café and some of our WRPS, and then I'm scraping together what I'm referring to as miscellaneous. It's 20,000 probably going to be from building rental. It's, it's maybe another 10,000 from WRPS, but it's not going to be from where traditionally it's been, which has been our daycare program, which has generally been a revolving fund that we have used to supplement our revenue. And we are actually, the tables are reversed, and we are actually having to fund the daycare with our operating budget at this time. So however, in FY2020, I also froze revolving. I'm holding as close as I can all of our FY21 expenditures, and it is my goal and it is my hope to roll 434,000, so to not use this full 900 or use the, the full 900 and dig into our, you know, existing balances and increase our utilization of our revolving counts, accounts by $400,000 next year. This is all in an effort, again, you know, to bridge this gap and, and recognize that what we're, what we're facing is really, you know, a one-year of, of a perfect storm. And I really want to reassure folks that Biz and I have been talking about this, we've been planning about this for over a year. Every move that the school committee and the school administration has made since March of 2020 has had March of '21 in mind, and every move I'm making right now has March of '22 in mind. So we really are attempting, you know, to work this problem and, and to work this problem together. So just, so in summary, sort of bring it all back home to just where we are today is, again, this is what I presented to FinCom, and we have the $282,000 reduction in town revenue from FY21 to FY22. We have our salaries, and we have, you know, our projected deficit. You know, we were asked tonight, so to speak, to come with a, a specific ask of what's our final figure of how much we need for help. I just want to be, be clear that procedurally, you know, before, you know, I or Dr. Cron can make any adjustments in any of our budgetary expenses, we need to go in front of the school committee, and the school committee has, has to vote, you know, those changes. So for me to vote something different than what the school committee has already been approved, has art, has approved up until this point would be inappropriate. And so, but I do want to assure you that, you know, I'm working on the salary figure with the principals. I, I have meetings set up with each of the principals between now and next week. And we're working on the salary figure. I spoke yesterday at great length with Biz for several hours about our grants, yeah, and our revolving, and on the utilization of, of SRR1 and our utilization of, of SRR2. So I just again want to assure you that we are working this problem, you know, over here, and we're doing everything we can, not just to fund next year, but to close this year and to close this current year in a fiscally responsible manner that puts us in a better position for FY22 and quite frankly, for FY23, which is, is very, very much on our minds, especially if the chapter 70 situation at the state does not resolve. So the ask, which is what we were asked to ask, and our ask is, you know, that the, the town provide us with however much relief it can to help us close this. Not asking for everything, I'm not asking for a certain dollar amount. We're not asking for a certain dollar. Not asking for everything, I'm not asking for a certain dollar amount, we're not asking for a certain dollar amount. We're just asking for help and raising the flag that we need help and we really do believe we need help. Alright, we ask that we work collaboratively in the next couple of weeks. So we understand the new incoming relief funds as well as we understand the ones that we currently have. And that we understand how and help prioritize and understand each other's needs. So we can utilize each of these funds to address our financial challenges that are both COVID related and that are frankly recurring. And, you know, what are we doing? You know, we have a school committee meeting, you know, next Monday night between now and then. You know, we are working to review our salary, our grant and our revolving lines in light of new D E S I announcements that that frankly are coming daily. You know, we we call it the the Friday dump frequently, you know, usually around five thirty, D E S I puts out something new that we need to meet. And this week, there was a positive in that we were informed there's no remote academy for next year. That D E S I is not going to require that. So that's going to help me in that salary line. Alright, so that's really where I'm at, where we're at. You know, as a district, you know, we appreciate, you know, being able to be here tonight. And to go over this with you, I'm just going to stop sharing. And you know, really just sort of end again, you know, with, you know, thanking you for the the opportunity to be here and 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 share where we view we're at.
Thanks, Jane. Okay, I'll bring up the any questions from the board? Larry, any questions?
I'll just, I'm I'm just happy to see all the details that we have so that we can all understand from top to bottom. And I think that's always a a big thing, the more information that we have as a collaborative group would give us, it gives us better understanding of how to deal with the problem. As a town and not just a school department, we don't want to hang anybody out to dry or or whatever. But, you know, it unfortunately, for me, this isn't the first rodeo I've been on. Had to go through a number of years where things didn't go smoothly and and eventually everything works out. If we just keep our wits about us and and do what needs to be done. Because we could always fix anything. No matter what happens today, if we have to fix it tomorrow, we can have another meeting, another anything and we can fix it. So I think that, you know, the day-to-day approach to the whole financial issue based on what the state's going to do and the federal government or anybody else is the way to go. And then we could, like I said, we could always, you know, you go into town meeting, come up with one number. If there has to be an adjustment to that, we have a special town meeting. And and we do and we and we use whatever more money or less money that we get to fix whatever problem, whichever way it has to go. I mean, we can't say it's going to be perfect, we can't say we're going to get all the money we want. But we got the plan, you know, we got something in place that we can look at and and I don't know, work together that to us. It's it's a very, very difficult situation to put it in the least. And and you know, it's an awful lot of pressure put to bear from the government. And and then they the in the less revenues, et cetera, et cetera. So it's put a lot of stress on the whole system. And I think that it appears that we got things sort of squared away and that we're all going to we're working toward the same goal so that the town of Rockland is taken care of from top to bottom. And that includes all the schools and whatever we need to do. But again, fiscal responsibility is all of ours to endure. And and no, it is, it's it's we're at the really at the will of the the people of the town of Rockland. And if we don't present our case of both sides adequately to them, they're liable to say, no, we're not going to do this or we're not going to do that. But I know that in all the years I've been hanging around here. We go into town meeting prepared. We always, even in our leanest years, we had preparation. And we've gone through hundreds of articles in one night where other towns take four nights to to accomplish the same deal. And that's due to the diligence of both the town administrators, the school department and the FinCom for having everything all set in place, all the numbers in place. So that when the average citizen comes before us, he's got it in front of him and and they have something that they can make their judgment by, if if that's the way to put it, you know? Because again, we're reaching into the same pockets. A lot of us are sitting in there paying paying the same freight as the guy who lives next door. But we we know where it all comes from and we know where it all going to go. And we have to convince the people of the town of Rockland that we're doing that job and we're going to, we're going to make it show up. And and we're going to apply that every tax dollar that you got is going to be used appropriately, efficiently and to the benefit of the town. And I think that we're headed in that direction and everybody in the town knows that we're working toward the goal. And the goal is the happy town of Rockland, if you will, according to how much money we have to deal with. It's a it's a harsh reality, but we'll we'll face each problem that comes along and we'll deal with it. And and in the end, just like always, we'll be back on our feet and and revving the engines full tilt. Thank you for letting me rant and rave.
As long as you realize, okay. Thank you, Larry, appreciate it. Mike, did you have something to say? I say you unmuted your mic.
Yeah, where do I start? Few things, just, I mean, we know we're in budget budget season. So and I think for the anxiety and probably the mental health of all of us. I think all of us like a very predictable budget timeline and budget process. You know, going through and playing for each fiscal year. And frankly, if we didn't have, if last year didn't actually cause us enough anxiety. This year is probably causing us just as much. I think one thing is very clear that based on the timeline of the legislature and their budget process, then adding in, oh, you know, how, oh, you know, state and federal grant funding continue to impact this process. Oh, you know, the 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 relief that we all feel after that first Monday in May. On having a budget that's actually done and put to bed. Obviously, we're not going to feel that this year probably probably hopefully by July, everything will be put to bed and will be whole. But I say that because, oh, you know, things are going to continue involving. We already have a set town meeting date that we set actually in January. Due to the requirements of the charter. So we have to have an annual town meeting in May. Oh, that is gonna have some numbers based on the information that we have leading up to that. And then I think we all as a town. And I think the residents of the town need to understand and the employees of the town need to understand that we're going to be adjusting as we have more information about the state budget. Like in more information about the state and federal grants that come our way. So I say that because patience is going to be a virtue. And I don't think any of us are really patient people and I probably the worst offender here. But I say that because, I mean, all right, things are already evolved and things are going to continue evolve. But I really want to point out the fact that going back to our meetings last month. Oh, where we talked about the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. Oh, and the fact that Rockland is being actually shortchanged or not shortchanged. But the benefits that we thought, oh, and we believe that Rockland are actually needs based on the need we have are not going to be fully realized. Oh, and for the folks at home, I just want to make sure oh, that everyone really understands, really the oh, like the leadership of the school department and Jane Hackett in particular. Oh, in terms of raising this issue and the challenges that Rockland faces to actually the highest echelons oh, like of leadership at the State House. A Rockland is a seat at the table right now because like of the leadership at the school department. And I think frankly, that speaks actually volume to our credibility. Oh, as a town in the credibility of the school department here, so I want to thank you, Jane, for that. But like, we're going to continue with to evolve. But one of the questions I have. Like in terms of the one point two million dollar deficit that you mentioned, Jane, that's with that's where none of the S of funding being applied to that deficit, am I correct or no?
No, at one point two million dollars, I'm using seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of S R two money.
Alright. And that one point two million dollar deficit, is that with the cost of remote academies still baked in to the expenses side of our budget?
Some yes and some no. Not all, not all of our remote costs are included in there, but some are. As an example, over two hundred thousand dollars of the salary costs would be our E L tutors. That were hired in one of the requirements of S R two is actually that ten percent minimum be used to fund in service lower income or economically challenged students.
Got it, okay, and then hold on a second, I was just on a wall, but I interrupted my stream of thought, which is not a good thing. The other transportation. Transportation is a huge cost as well. And that's, oh, I believe, increased with the COVID requirements. The the F Y twenty-two budget, is that based on the transportation requirements with COVID spacing and all those regulations? Is that still driving that cost?
No, in fact, from F Y twenty to F Y twenty-one, we actually reduced a bus.
Oh, whoops, okay, sorry.
No, that's okay, and we are maintaining, I'm currently projecting utilizing the same number of buses next year that we're using this this year. That was actually a big part of our expense savings last year.
Okay.
Was elimination of a elimination of a bus.
Okay. I know one more thing that goes back to what I mentioned at the beginning. So like we're including S O one and S O two. Hopefully, if we're lucky, we will see S S three that will be dedicated to the school side that comes directly from D E S I. So that means then oh, and all this is subject to details, obviously, as we know. But that means hopefully, because I think the number, the number earlier that I can mention from the A P R. In terms of Rockland's portion of the A P R, that doesn't include a school funding at this point, am I correct?
That's that's correct, that's my understanding. Biz, you agree?
Yes, I I agree, there's different funding sources out becoming for the schools, through the federal S S three and any other grants coming through D E S I.
So in terms of revenues, just in, I say possibilities in terms of revenue that we know have the potential to come to the town into the school department. There were three big revenue part, if you will, that have good reason to come. One, hopefully, is going to be the changes to the legislature to either hold enrollment at the prior year's enrollment level, which will wholly allow us more chapter seventy of funding. Then we have the S S three. And then we have the town side of the A P R revenue. Where it seems based on what Doug had mentioned, is going to be divided up over at least two years. But those are three, three opportunities for additional revenue. That that tonight on March sixteenth, we don't have. And that goes back to, unfortunately, I think we're all going to be in this for these long slog. As these, hopefully, as these changes and as all these details get hopefully more clear. We're going to have more opportunities together to address the issues that we need to address. And with that, I'm not trying to be overly rosy because I I I I understand the anxiety that we all have. But I mean, understanding that the anxiety that comes with these lulls that Dr. Cron, oh, I know you have, that Jane and Colleen, I know you have. I mean, oh, you know, that right now saying this is lip service because it doesn't speak to the fact that you are literally dreaming these numbers every single night. But I would like to be optimistic and thinking and hoping that as we all move through this longer than expected and longer than we want process. Hopefully, we're gonna, at the end of the day, by continuing to have the conversations that we're having. Oh, we're gonna, oh, like a, oh, sunshine at some point in this process. I'll just end there because I've talked way too long, but I think I think I got my point across.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something?
And Colleen.
Thank you, just to speak to what Mr. Mullin was saying, we're talking about S R three funds or future money coming in for the schools. We haven't really spoken about curriculum and that's my deal. So we have lots of learning interruption, we have unfinished learning, we have educational gaps. The only thing we spoke of was a math program for elementary. I mean, these student needs need to be addressed, whether it's with programs or staffing or some types of support. So that is a huge piece to this, to this issue also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lizzie.
I will keep it shorter than the other two. The one thing that we've learned over the last year is that we don't know what tomorrow brings. And off of off of Mr. Mullins, you know, talk about anxiety. I think this last year has raised everyone's anxieties. The the unknown starts to really play with your mind, right? You you do the what ifs, you know, what if this happens, what if that happens? And I think human nature, most of us, go to the negative side, you know? And we keep looking at at this chasm that gets deeper and deeper. But the reality is that we are not the only community in this. The reality is virtually every community is in this. While a year later, we finally have seen a stimulus package that that was passed that finally addresses some of the potential revenue shortfalls in towns. Dressing more issues within the educational system. I do, to to Mr. Mullins' point, have a little bit of optimism. But the one thing that I do want to remind everyone is we will work through this together. And we we need to make sure that cooler heads prevail, keep the lines of communication going. As we've seen, this budget changes, it's not daily, sometimes it's hourly, right? And it's going up and down, we've already taken to account, you know, we know we're going to have a special town meeting. We may end up with two special town meetings depending on what happens. So just want to make sure cooler heads prevail. And I do want to make sure that everyone in the school department, on the school committee, that they know that this board, the FinCom, the town, will continue to work to support the school. And will also continue to work to support the town. And when it's all said and done, we'll come out of this on the other other side on the positive. Still may be uh some bumps ahead, but um we will, we will work through this together. I'm sure of that.
Thank you, Rich. So, you know, kind of to, you know, piggyback off of what my colleague said, uh I I think I think it is early on. Well, it's getting later in the process and to Doug's point, you know, we had hoped to vote a final budget tonight. Obviously, that's not really feasible at this point, so we we can put that off. We'll do a special meeting at some point next week. But over the next couple of days, I guess my ask would be, uh and Jane, you and I briefly discussed this earlier. Is maybe we do a meeting at some point uh the end of this week. I know Doug put it out there in an email about possibly Thursday. If you guys have some availability Thursday afternoon. Uh with Jane, uh Biz, uh Dr. Kron, uh Doug, Jill, obviously you as well, and and then I can attend and. And maybe the six of us can kind of put our heads together and and just see where where each each budget is coming from. Uh and we can kind of get to a number as to, you know. After Jane, you had said that you guys had some things you guys were gonna look at from a salary perspective and stuff like that. So you guys take a look at that. You guys come ready and prepared to present the steps that you have taken. And then we'll we'll double back and we'll look and see what we can do and we'll try to, you know, get that gap closed, but have a productive conversation, not just. Not just where we are currently, what funds are available. And to Doug's point, you know, that just came out this afternoon. Jane, you said Desi gives you guys information, you know, on on every Friday. We don't know what the rollout of this this funding is gonna be. Uh we are committed to doing whatever we have to do uh as far as getting you guys. Those funds when they are available. If that's a special town meeting, that's a special town meeting. To Rich's point, if it's two special town meetings, then then so be it. You know, w- we're gonna get this, we're gonna get this fixed, and and I I have all the confidence in in the world, in the people that we have. Uh both on the the quote unquote school side and on the town side. That you guys are the right people to do this job, and you guys are the ones that'll be able to figure this out. Uh whatever support we can give you guys, but I think it's more importantly, it's just continuing the open discussion. You know, having that dialogue uh and and working together and and just knowing, I mean, there is, there is funding on the way uh when it gets here. You know, who's to say, but you know, the fact that, you know, we had some actual numbers, well, maybe some actual numbers depending on, you know, interpretation of those numbers. Presented to us. Uh I think that's 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 a light anyway for us anyway to look forward to. And, you know, there's a couple of things, the work that you guys have done, you know, with the legislature, legislature with the chapter seventy. You know, let's keep, let's keep pounding them. Find out, find out when when we're gonna hear any kind of resolution on it, you know. Call call the state reps, call the state centers, you know, and stay stay on them. We'll stay, I'll stay on them. I'll call them, I'll call them both tomorrow if you want me to. And and bring you guys an update when we have this meeting. But we we're not gonna, we're not gonna leave you guys high and dry, and just as I know if the shoe was on the other foot, you know, uh you guys would would help us and support us. So. You know, with that said, we we're still, we're still all, or those that are paid are all paid by, you know, the town of Rockland, alright, we're one. One group, one town, alright, so we're gonna figure this out and, you know, to Rich's point, let's just stay calm. It's, I I know it's nerve wracking. I know there's a lot of anxiety involved in it, but but we'll we'll get through it and and we'll come up with a solution, but. It's gonna be tough over the next couple of days, you know, to definitely just sit down and and go over some things, and there's, there's gonna be some. Some enlightening, uh I I think, information shared on both sides, and and I'm sure, I think, the bigger thing is just the more education. You know, we have, you know, as a board and about what what goes on with you guys. I mean, I I'm open to coming down, you know, once a month to sit with you guys. I I have no problem with that. I'm sure every member of my board is willing to do that as well. Because the more, the more knowledge we have of your operations, the better, the better informed our decision making is on this side. As well, and and I know Doug would be willing to do the same, and and Biz, I know you and Jane probably talk more than you work, so. So with that said, uh you know, we're here to help you guys, so whatever you guys need, but the next couple of days, uh leading up to that school committee meeting on Monday. Followed by our meeting on Tuesday and the FinCom meeting on Wednesday. We've got a lot of work to do, okay?
Mike, can I say one thing? I didn't mean to cut you off, but I.
I don't mean that was done.
I just, I just wanted to follow up on that last thing you said, because to me, that's the most important, which is. I don't feel comfortable wait, excuse me, I don't feel comfortable waiting weeks in the plural to finalize this. If, you know, if the state budget was coming out, you know, a week from Friday, I'd say, okay, let's wait for the final state budget and then we'll lock it in, but. We know the state budget is, you know, several months off from being done, and I don't have confidence that we're gonna have one hundred percent V O R, you know, guidance on this. You know, late next week, so I I consistent with what you just said, my request would be that we meet later this week in schools. And then we finalize everything on Tuesday, and the finance committee already has their meeting scheduled for Wednesday. Um so that we can lock that up and have one week to finish the warrant and get that, you know, done with town council, and then you approve the final warrant on April sixth. Cause we're just, we're just running out of time, so I, that timeline, I think, will be realistic again, because so much is gonna happen later. That'll necessitate the special town meeting that everybody's already talked about.
And if something, if something comes through before uh town meeting, a- a- as far as funding is concerned. We could always add an amendment to to the school's uh budget in the warrant, so, you know, that's, that's, I mean, we've done that. Many times, you know, to to reflect funding that that's. Yeah, yeah, we we'd sit in the cafeteria just before town reading and we'd scribble it out on a cocktail napkin, uh so, but maybe not. You know, you know what I mean?
It's close to it, yeah.
Pretty much, you know, and and we'd write the amendment and we'd scramble to the microphone to get it read on the record, so. You know, whatever we have to do, we we have time in that manner, you know, but, you know, if we vote, just because we voted it, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't go to print till to when, Doug?
Well, it has to be distributed, it has to be posted two weeks before, um and I send it off to the printer, you know, a week before that, so it's really the. The uh like the first full week in April is when I send it off, so that's why, you know, you voted on the sixth, and then we're, you know, then we're done.
So, yeah, just go ahead, Rich.
Just remember. Like last year, the final budget, we know is not the final budget. What 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 is at town meeting in May is not what is going to be the final budget. Because we we know we don't have all the information, and we just, we gotta continue to remember that.
If nobody else has any other comments, uh, you know, I thank you guys for joining us and. You're welcome to stay. By no means are you guys required to. I know you guys have had very long days, and uh I think we've got some more things on the agenda, so. Thank you, guys. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Hello, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh next on the agenda, South Shore Vocational Technical High School Request for Debt Authorization, Superintendent Director Thomas Sicky.
Hi, Mister Chairman, members of the board. Uh thanks very much for uh bringing us on the agenda tonight so that we can. Talk to you about a warrant article that we're bringing to uh to the spring town meetings in all eight of our towns. Chairman, I was able to afford some materials in advance of the meeting, and uh it would certainly take your lead as to whether you'd like me to walk through those slides. For the board, um then take questions throughout. Um I can walk through it quickly or your pleasure.
Well, yeah, I I think uh you you took the time to put together a nice presentation. Uh I'll give you the opportunity to present it, not just to the board, but also to. Whatever residents of Rockland might be watching.
Thank you. Uh before, if I could get access to share my screen, we're also joined uh by your representative to our regional school committee. Uh Bob Mahoney, who's also a member of our capital project subcommittee, our district treasurer Jim Coughlin, who is also available to uh to assist with the presentation.
You should be able to share your screen, Tom. Let me know if it doesn't work.
Thank you. Looks like it will. Okay, can you see that all right?
We got it.
Fantastic. So I'll start very briefly with a half a step back. It it might dovetail nicely with the the previous topic. I do have a slide to just unpack for you our budget situation. Rockland's enrollment at South Shore is a hundred and forty-three students. Our budget that our school committee certified was a one point eight nine percent increase. We will be seeking uh nine thousand six hundred and two dollars less than we asked from Rockland last year. Our, so of the one million eight twenty-four two sixty-four. A significant portion, a significant portion of the budget is capital spending on infrastructure. I isolate that because I'll refer to it a little later in the presentation. The pace of our capital spending to maintain the building, uh how that next to our, our seeking the, seeking permission to. The capacity to borrow is gonna be very important. What I can tell you, as was mentioned previously, uh the same funding, the same S R funding, we also get a s- a a smaller share. By our calculation, we would anticipate that if the, if the funding for the grant goes to plan. We would be able to, later in the fiscal year, lower the requested assessment amount. By a little under thirty-three thousand dollars, but we would come in with the number on this slide. And then we'd apply for the funds, and then at some point when we're collecting assessments from our communities. There is, there is a provision that would allow for some relief, the minimum local contribution increases, so. We'll uh we'll keep you uh uh we'll keep you updated on that. So that's the budget in a very, a very quick snapshot fiscal twenty-two. The debt authorization proposed article has nothing to do with fiscal twenty-two. We are not seeking to borrow any money. If we borrow money, or if we have any debt service, we've got to carry it in the proposed budget going forward, so. All eight of our communities support this, and we'd have the potential to bring in the fiscal twenty-three budget. Some portion of the assessment would be devoted to debt. The fiscal twenty-two budget, we have no debt on the books, the school. Now I'll pivot over to the debt authorization. We are a perennial candidate to the MSBA. For support, we have submitted statements of interest since twenty fifteen. Our story is what many of you know. We are a well-maintained aging building, the second oldest regional vocational school in Massachusetts. Very popular, we don't have enough space. That's the story we tell. We're awaiting the board's decision. They are. Hopefully, we're one of thirty schools being considered for invitation. So the premise of this article is to say to ourselves, we can't wait for MSBA. We're not gonna be overly aggressive about borrowing. We will reassess everything the minute we get that notice that says you're gonna be invited. We're well positioned. We have a stabilization fund that has money already set aside for a feasibility study. Should we get invited? It will have no additional impact on the towns, because as you know from probably your own local experience, when those invitations come in. Coming at an odd time in the calendar year. And so to be told in a normal, non-COVID year, say in January, you've got two hundred and seventy days to marshal pound support. It makes it a heck of a lot easier to know you have some funds available, because January does not fit cleanly in a budget cycle for a regional school. So I'm happy about that. We're well positioned to be prepared to react if we're invited. The authorization article assumes we won't, and that we need, we need the borrowing capacity to address larger capital projects. So even with a one point eight nine percent budget increase, it's very lean on the operating side, and we're carrying eight hundred ninety-five thousand dollars of capital. All of which is being devoted infrastructure, all of which is being devoted future projects. So our strategy here is to go to our eight towns, ask for a debt authorization of a little over eighteen point nine million. It's not Rockland's share. We're obligated to ask for the total potential amount we might want to borrow. What we're looking at doing, and I'll unpack it on on a, some slides coming up, is that we're looking to phase in borrowing by phasing in projects. We want to come to our eight towns once with a sound rationale and a roadmap. Ask for our town's support, because at the end of the day, we still have to make each annual assessment affordable to our towns. So Rockland's share on this slide, you can see the fourth bullet down, Rockland's share of any that we might take on. After an authorization in fiscal twenty-one, twenty-six point four three percent. Oh, if you, if you hear blah, 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 and a bunch of numbers from me, pick whatever number you hear and multiply it point two six four three, and that would give you a sense. Rockland's share. That's not in addition to our budget. It's not in addition to our assessment. That's the number would be on the debt service line of our budget. That we still bring to you, because the very last bullet on this slide is very important to us. We know that we only get to bring one number. Anytime you see a number from us, it includes operating, capital, transportation, and debt, all baked into one. We can't bring multiple numbers, so if we bring a number that's too aggressive with borrowing, it's not gonna, uh it's not gonna fly. We'll have to look at the operating side of our budget, which is not the way to 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 run the school, having to cut operating expenses. So we've got to continue to communicate and dialogue with our communities as we phase in this plan. Make sure that our communities know what their share would be and why we're doing it. The next few slides, I hope, will unpack the why uh in a little more detail. We had an engineering firm help us put together a facilities master plan, validate. Infrastructure improvements, and back in twenty eighteen, they gave us a great list of recommendations, and we've been chipping away at it. But we've, we, after a big window project, we're hopefully gonna do this summer, funded entirely in fiscal twenty-two. Now have to graduate larger projects. We simply would not ask our towns to afford in a single budget year. Hence the need for borrowing. Master plan also includes the need for additional space. Our strategy, we're planning here, most of these dollars would go to infrastructure improvements. There are are some funds dedicated for space as well. I won't read this whole slide to you, but this slide shows you how we would phase in a series of projects over five years. A lot of these projects could not be done while schools in session. At the bottom of each column, you would see the approximate amount. I can explain to you how we would, uh we would, how we've arrived at these numbers. So many of the items on this list are just, they're really non-negotiable infrastructure essentials. We don't need a new building. We need to renovate the nineteen sixty-two original building, the nineteen ninety-two addition. We need to push this building deeper into the twenty-first century with a little more space. Number will, that will be published in the warrant article is eighteen million nine hundred sixty thousand five hundred and thirty-seven. We took all of the recommendations and we pulled out the ones that we completed. We factored in a four percent inflation factor, the remaining unfinished projects. We only inflated it through fiscal twenty-three, but we know right out of the gate that we're not doing all these projects in fiscal twenty-three, but we had to stop the. Had to stop the projections at some reasonable point and say, we're just gonna do the best we can with this number. We added in soft costs for the projects that would require an O P M or a designer or construction contingency. And we, we backed out some costs, so that eighteen point nine would have been higher, probably closer to twenty. The the great story out of this is that, number one, we backed out some construction costs because our shops can build a portion of the addition. H vac, carpentry, electrical, metal fabrication welding. If we're in a position that we could put on a modest addition. In the summer of twenty twenty-two, and then have our kids build the inside of it. Not only does that feed their curriculum, but it helps the bottom line. Addition, we also were able to pull out honestly about nine hundred thousand dollars of electrical expenses. Because our engineers said that based on the type of work over a period of time, students in our electrical program tackle some of the infrastructure work involving wiring. So, so I feel like we have a good, we have a good foundation and rationale for, how do you know it's a problem? What are your priority projects? How do you intend to phase it in? How did you arrive at this big number? We've got the number, we've got our regional agreement unpacks it, so we do a three-year look back on enrollment, and that's how we arrive at. Twenty-six point four three percent. Now, here's a very busy slide that would show you our strategy for phasing in the borrowing. These are not Rockland-specific numbers. These are in the aggregate. So without reading every cell, if you look at each line, see, look at each line as a phase or a borrowing year. We would start with under anticipation notes, interest only, the first two years of this plan. So you can read across and see how much we'd approximately borrow. We're factoring in, and we're factoring in a higher market. Interest rate. We know that borrowing rates are low. We want to use a higher rate. We just don't want to have teaser rates. Because these numbers need to stand the test of time going forward. So phase one, phase two, the interest. Phase three, we borrow another million dollars and we bond eleven million dollars in fiscal twenty-five. We continue with the plan. Again, we're waiting for MSBA. Hello, MSBA. They come, we hold, we reassess. Those numbers go down, we all have a party. If not, we continue to hit the temperature of our communities. Again, we're not obligated to follow this matrix. But you deserve to see what we're thinking in terms of how we might do it. Our communities can't support a particular phase of borrowing. We're gonna get that sense because we're in regular communication. We're looking to see what the impact is on debt service. We're looking to see how our operating budget matches up. If this were to plan, we would then go into two more years of interest-only borrowing. And we would then phase in a second bond. And we would then phase in a second bond fiscal twenty eight. We are also, along with using a higher than expected interest rate, we're also expecting that the repayment plan would be level principal, which, as you know, we put it would inflate those numbers because there's more principal and less interest. Should the time come where our financial advisors, if our strategy is that maybe we need to spread out those payments a little further, make it a level debt service payment, those numbers could be lowered. So let's take the aggregate now, and now we'll take that twenty six point four three percent. See, okay, where are we, Rockland? On the first slide, I went, I I mentioned to you a presentation, I said, Rockland's share of capital in fiscal twenty two is two hundred and thirty six thousand. If I use that, as I as my eyes go to this slide, I go to the middle of this slide, because what I'm seeing here, that would be at least three years up until fiscal twenty five, for we would see a debt service amount that would come close to what we're asking for now. If we don't have the borrowing capacity, we will probably need to continue the same strategy of building in capital numbers like what we're seeing in fiscal twenty two. If we can make commitments for larger projects, but continuous cycle of design or pure and procure and construct, if we can work this plan, in the first two years, those those numbers would be lower. What will happen is our capital money would our capital amount would go down and it would shift over to debt. The high watermark that you're going to see looking forward is this fiscal twenty eight number, which includes two bonds, principal and interest, would be the high watermark. So as I'm telling all of our communities, we're in regular communication, but it's certainly by fiscal twenty seven and twenty eight. We're going to know a lot more about what we've been able to accomplish. How successful has the pacing of this plan been? How receptive are our communities as we go to them each year? Maybe we have to stretch this out further. Maybe MSBA takes the curse off of some of these numbers. At least this takes our plan, prioritizes the projects, puts some numbers to it, then shows you what Rockland's share would be. This busy slide takes a half a step back, just tries to validate that over the last six fiscal years, the blue bar would be Rockland's share of capital. You can see how that has increased. That those are the numbers that match the words of, we need more capital. And the red that you see rolling off was from a twenty ten roof and window project. So right now, projected budget in fiscal twenty two, at the bottom of this slide, that's that capital number plus goose egg for debt. Now, this let this promises the last busy slide, but I also want to take this concept, apply it going forward. This is more of a feeling. It's not like that. I don't consider the accuracy of this to be as tight as maybe some of the other slides. I made some assumptions. I looked at this and I said, okay, there's my fiscal twenty two baseline. There's no debt and a bunch of capital. Let's pretend that our six year phase in comes in between twenty three to twenty eight that we're borrowing. At the same time, it would be foolish to say that we would never have another capital expense, replace a vehicle, a lathe. Vocational equipment and transportation are probably are the two big capital expenses. So I I created a scenario which said, let's pretend that from fiscal twenty three till fiscal forty seven, with an inflationary adjustment of three percent a year, let's pretend that we had, we needed a hundred and fifty grand in capital. Not eight hundred and ninety five, which is what we've got now in fiscal twenty two. So let's take a much lower number. If we've got our infrastructure taken care of, and we still have to have some capital. So what I want you to see here, that going forward, again, right now, you can look at that fiscal twenty two baseline, you can see how those numbers would grow over time. It's an honest combination. It's an attempt at an honest combination of taking care of the debt and trolling for inflation if we if we had capital needs. The blue bars are totally hypothetical. It could be years that we have virtually no capital. I think we owe it to everybody to say, okay, what would this look like? I go back to the original slide, which is, we have to make these numbers affordable. If we're going to embark on phase four of this plan, we've got to know that we've been talking to our communities, and we've got to know that we've got the capacity and the support to be able to do this. So this assumes these numbers would would play out. You can see after fiscal twenty eight, the numbers roll off, the first bond rolls off. In this in this twenty year bond scenario, the first bond rolls off in in fiscal forty four, and then the second bond rolls off in fiscal forty seven. All of this information, by the way, will be on our school website, a recorded video that narrates this, these slides, some other information. Rest of this presentation, I will not, I'll I'll pick up the pace. These are the library of resources to try to explain to to folks who want to know more information. Slide explains that when a regional school votes to incur debt, it triggers a sixty day clock ticking, the member communities to take action. A community has two options, take no action within the sixty days, and then that becomes an affirmative vote, or take action, namely in the form of a town meeting. We are very cognizant. This is something you want to bring to citizens, weigh in on. But the school committee has deliberately not officially voted this so that we can accommodate eight town meetings, which in our world, run from April twelfth in Situate until April twenty fourth for Cohasset and Abington. So that's just a slide that unpacks the legal process. So I anticipate that our committee would take this matter up at the end of March, enough time to hit our first town meeting in Situate. That sixty day window means it's being, we're requesting it on warrants. It's going to fall within a sixty day window for our communities. We need all eight communities to support this. If one community is not, it's not a two thirds or three fourths. It has to be a unanimous, they're non action, or most likely be in a a majority voted on meetings, eight on meetings. Rest of the presentation shows another visual unpacking, unpacking the various categories we use. This is the the here's the verbiage for the article. And then a few pictures of our school on Webster Street that that we want to show perhaps folks that aren't as familiar with our school, what some of the reasons are that we keep applying to MSBA. That charcoal colored roof on the lower left, that's that, that's a fiscal twenty three priority. That's the thirty year old roof we would replace. We want to be able to share with people bird's eye view and on the ground view some of the things that we need to, that we want to try to address and modernize in the building. Mr. Chairman, I I'm grateful for the time. If you if you'll allow me, I'd like to be able to turn it over to Jim Coughlin. If if there's anything that he could add, or he and I certainly respond to any questions that came up from the presentation.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Tom covered pretty much most of the the number factors. And again, one of the things that we've run into the last few years is that a fact that our our building is so well maintained, our staff is is tremendous. And we've never had this, the number of students versus the size of the building space issue. Most of our space issues come with our shops. Unfortunately, we can usually only accept seventeen students into our electrical program, even though there's a there's thirty, thirty five people that want to be in the program. So a lot of kids sometimes will not get their first choice based upon the space limitations that we see in some of the most popular shops. So we also run for lunches during the course of the day because of the size of the the cafeteria, and our science labs are a little bit too small to accommodate the the needs of our our science curriculum so forth. So overall, the the process, as you guys are aware, through your borrowing process, through your new additions over the last couple of years. Yeah, we're looking to to do the best we can to save money for the for the towns. We know that the level level principal payment sometimes will spike a little bit higher. We've looked at the possible amortization over of a bond and the the interest cost of the of the added interest over the years just doesn't make sense for a for a member town. So overall, Tom provided you with most of the numbers and and it's a it's pretty much a sound process that we're looking at.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. I'll open it up to questions from the board. Anybody on on the board? Rich, I saw you unmuted.
Yeah, so I've got a couple. So, gentlemen, thank you very much for the presentation. Mr. Hickey, as as always, I I get to see your presentations sitting for years on the FinCom and just your your knowledge of your school system, your presentations are always top notch. So I really appreciate that. When we, when you're looking at the Rockland's percentage at this point, and certainly we're talking about, you know, a project that is going to go into multi phases and 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 be financed over, you know, twenty plus years. As the phases come up, would you look at the student population in each phase and would that percentage adjust? So if we had more students, we would have a larger impact. If we had less students, would we have a lesser impact?
Excellent question. Thank you for raising it. Regional agreement takes all the gray out of it. When there's a debt issue, Rich, it's a fixed percentage. So in the year in which the debt is authorized, we would look at the ratios. So essentially, whether we're borrowing money in fiscal twenty three or in fiscal twenty seven, the percentages would remain the same. When we are, when we assess our towns for capital, however, it's a three year rolling average. So that twenty six point four three would be the number we'd apply in any of the upcoming years.
So next question is obviously from a bonding perspective. You know, as we just went through our first phase of bonding for our project in town, we were pleasantly surprised. We used the same number, three and a half percent, and it came in at one point eight two, which is a significant reduction. From a bonding capability, I don't know if you guys can answer this or Biz or, you know, Doug or whoever. Would you be able to, if if one of the towns had a lower bonding rate than what you were able to get as as a regional school, would you be able to tap into that town and and get a get a better bond rating than what the than what you might be able to get as a regional school?
My my sense, Jim, I know if you want to weigh in on this as well, I think we would have our own rating. The last time we were rated, we were AA three, I think. We had our own rating separate from one of our, any of our separate communities.
No, and I I kind of figured that. I just didn't know if 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 there was one of the communities that might have a better bond rating, would you be able to access that? I don't, it's just a question. I don't know.
And I think we're, we are a standalone entity for bond rating. As we've, as we've gone through the process with our advisors, the financial advisors and our our bond council, the ban, the ban borrowing for the first two years will not require bond, you know, rating. But then, once we go for bonding in year three, that's when the rating bureaus will come forward and and do their interviews and and processes and and look for all the policies, procedures, and financial background to to pretty much create a rating. Because the last time we borrowed was in two thousand and ten. And to Rich's question prior as well, now, on our assessment for the last ten years, we've been using the attendance for two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, and two thousand and nine as the basis for the Rockland debt on the first phase of our process. And and surprisingly enough, the the attendance back in those years, which are, again, eleven, twelve, thirteen years ago, where you, Rockland's share was still twenty six point two three percent back in those years. So it's pretty similar to where it is right now.
Last thing that I have is, if if this, if you guys go forward and the towns approve it, what could we do as a town to help you with MSBA? You know, certainly, I've been on, I've been on both building committees in Rockland, and and for us, it's been a tremendous asset. But I know you guys have, I think, what, seven years now that you've been?
Yes.
With with no, you know, with with nothing. Is there anything that we could do as a town or the other communities to try to help?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, the that's it's a great offer. I think a letter of support from from a respective boards of selectmen would be well, would be well received. We know that the MSBA process is needs based. We also know people pay attention when community, when municipal entities, governing boards weigh in. So I have have certainly reached out to our legislative delegation and asked them in a similar fashion, who simply let MSBA know that they're aware of our needs and a letter of support is would would be certainly in order and much, much appreciated. And thank you for asking.
That's it. Thank you, guys.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, but except for Rich actually took our mind. So thank you, Rich. But piggybacking off that, in terms in terms of the timeliness in the timeline of getting a letter from the Board of Selectmen to the MSBA, what is the timeline? I mean, should, oh, I mean, we're talking about other projects, so it's on the agenda. I mean, if we voted as a board to support such a letter tonight, what is the ideal timing of that, Mr. Hickey?
So the MSBA has been noncommittal because of COVID. They're they're in the process now, as you may know, of of still reviewing and evaluating the twenty twenty submissions. I'm being told that the board may take up, the MSBA may take up recommendations either at its April fourteenth quarterly meeting or its quarterly meeting in in June. So I I do not, so so perhaps at a at a future meeting, you would, you would, I I do not think that you should feel forced to take action tonight. Certainly, if you, if they were to consider us before April fourteenth, and you had the ability to to
Okay.
would be lovely.
No, that makes perfect sense. And just really to piggyback on a lot of what Rich had mentioned. Number one, first of all, your presentation as Rich mentioned was phenomenal. Before I actually hearing you go through the details, I was under the misinterpretation that the that the debt service would be actually added on to the two hundred thirty six in capital, but that is simply not true. And I and I was very, and I was able to very clearly see how the capital would be offset with the debt service. Obviously, with the capital still there, because you have other capital. So I I think how you, you know, how you and you and the district and the school committee have really thought this through. You can tell the only, the only like, what are your anxiety? You know, that this really gives me, and I think it just inherent, is that FY twenty eight. You know, that FY twenty eight, who knows where we're going to be, is just, you know, that I think that gives all of us anxiety, but, you know, number one, you know, because we've seen it. I do trust, you know, your commitment and the districts commit to make sure you're in communication then with the towns and understanding all the needs in the fiscal positions of the Votex member communities, like, and we know that'll happen because it's always happened. Number two, hopefully, this means that you're not going anywhere until at least FY forty nine.
Yes, okay.
You're gonna see the project through. You gotta see it.
There you go. There's a commitment right there. I I, Mr. Chair, I I appreciate the comments Mike's making here because we we have to bring you a budget, we have to bring you a number every year. But for us to, the good news is that even with a phased in plan, we still have to get, we still have to be able to come back to you. We get out of this arrangement, quite honestly, is that we're not coming to eight pounds every year. How long would it be before the bubble thought in your above your head is, oh, you again? Oh, you know, I can't keep your five year plans on, you know, I can't keep them straight. So bundling the ideas together and saying, we still have to do something that's affordable. You're right. When it gets, when it gets to that point, we're going to know a lot more. I don't want to spend a dollar when MSBA can pay fifty cents of it. So, you know, we're going to, we're going to be rethinking it. Could we get that invitation? And if it, like I said, if it, if we have to push some of this out before we take on an anticipation note, maybe in year phase four, year four, we're pushing something out. Maybe there's some other funding that's come along. The the legislature in December, when it was late passing its fiscal twenty one budget, included a grant program for fifteen million dollars, dedicated to expanding regional vocational schools. Not equipment, not using the school at night, but like literal brick and mortar funding. Now, fifteen million isn't a lot. I'm paying very close attention, and I've also written our legislative delegation to say, let's keep an eye on this budget line. I want to know when this grant is coming out because it's got us written all over it. Be able to score a little bit of money from a non MSBA, non local coffer. Be able to score a little bit of money from a non-MSBA, non-local coffer for us to be able to expand and modernize the school, something that is long overdue. And we, we as a community continue to advocate. We know the story of, we know the story of regional schools, a lot of them around the state. Massive amounts of, of, of state funding build them in the sixties and seventies. And now coming to age. There's no massive amount of state funding for this. So when, when there are these opportunities, we won't, we won't rest to, to take advantage of it. Because it just, it will lower, it will lower the bottom line. I am very fortunate that we've got a great team of people who, and who, who plan their budgets zero-based. They can see capital forecasts, don't have any capital in this budget for any vocational equipment. We knew that was gonna happen. That's what allows us to be able to make these plans with increasing degrees of confidence. And I hope we'll keep that same approach going forward.
Thank you.
Larry, anything? Are you good?
I'm pretty good. I just want to take the, a minute to thank Bob Mahoney, representative to the school for any part he has to play in all this stuff. He seems to represent the town pretty well down there. And, and I'm not trying to blow his horn, but Bob's always been a good guy. And I just think he should be recognized for what, whatever part he plays. So Bob, if you're out there, pal, hello, how are you? It's good to see you.
He's on mute.
I'm on mute?
No, you're not.
No, Bobby, he's taking a nap.
He's on mute. He's at the bottom of our screen on mute.
There you go. He's watching the TV show.
Bob, I did get a comment at the beginning of the meeting that actually someone thought there was a raccoon walking across your table, but hopefully it was only a cat. Bobby, you muted.
He doesn't know how to unmute it. It's a little square on the bottom left, Bob.
Yeah, I get you. Thanks. I get that. But yeah, no, there was a cat. That's all. She, she jumps up all the time during my wife's, when she's working from home. She likes to be part of the business. But no, thanks again, guys, for having us. Again, Dr. Hickey and Jim do a great job with the budgets in the presentations, and he has to do this eight times. So, but, you know, I, I'm glad I only have to do one, so.
Well, it was actually very good to get that presentation sent to us ahead of time.
Yeah.
Being able to sit down and, and look at this whole process by yourself. And you get to understand what you're talking about a little bit better so that we can understand what's going on. I thought that was an excellent thing to do, you know, because it put us in touch before we have, before we're really in touch. And that's an important thing, get that information out so we can talk about it, think about it and, and think and do as you say.
Right.
Thank you. And thanks, Bob, and all you guys from us. But Votex, you guys do a great.
I just want, I just want to let the board know back in January, late January, early February, went to and gave a presentation to the Rockland School Committee. I do that yearly, just to let them know what the numbers are and how many applications that we've had. And, you know, they've always wanted us to try and Dr. Khan liked to have us take the numbers down a little bit. So we've been kind of keeping it a nice steady number for that there. So that's should help with, you know, our school. Cause Rockland is one of the top communities that send the most students to our school.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, guys. Presentation was excellent. Which number town are we right now that you guys have presented to?
Oh, FinCom and Board of Selectmen, so that's sixteen. I'm somewhere in the middle. It's like that NCAA bracket. I don't know. I'm somewhere moving to the end of the middle.
We've hit it down pretty well so far. So not, not much room for improvement on that. So I appreciate your time. To Rich's point, Tom, your, your presentations have always been, been phenomenal. Back to the days when, when I was on FinCom with Rich, those are always perfect, you know, and very easy to understand for even someone like myself. So for that, I, I appreciate it, guys. I appreciate your hard work and, and the information. I, I thought it was important enough for you guys to put it out there for the residents of Rockland tonight. So thank you.
And I do, I do appreciate you saying that. And I appreciate you giving us this time at this point in the, in your busy, in your busy budget building process. So, so thanks to you and, and Doug. Thank you.
And Mike, can I just add that, you know, Tom's great with the communication and we have this plugged in for the annual town meeting warrant. So, you know, we're, we're gonna go for that.
Very good.
Sounds great. Thank you, guys. See you guys at town meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Update on affordable housing projects and all of town boards, committees and staff.
So, yeah, this will be really easy for me because I'm basically just gonna turn it over to Jen. But I just wanted to, you know, acknowledge that, that, you know, there's a lot going on right now, Mike. And, you know, you and I talked about it and you thought it would be a good time to give a kind of a broad, high-level kind of policy overview on affordable housing. And really, you know, Jen is excellent at this. And she put a little bit of time into putting a presentation together for you guys to go over it. So I'll turn it over to her. And if you have any questions, she's gonna try to answer it. I believe we have a consultant on board with us that we've been working with. And if there are any other particular things I might be able to help with, I'll do my best to answer as well. So I'll turn it over to Jen.
Jen, you're muted.
Yep. I just need to find my unmute. Thanks, Mike.
I just thought, I thought you were talking, so I was like, oh boy.
Oh, not yet. But thank you. Thank you, Doug. Yes, and I do want to acknowledge we have Judy Barrett on the call as well from Barrett Planning Group. And Judy is currently working with the town, providing technical assistance on a current forty-B project. So I want to thank the board also. I'm sorry, I have one more PowerPoint presentation with a lot of information. But as I always say, I think, you know, the best discussion is an informed discussion. And this is, this is an important topic. And I know it's been a topic, a frequent conversation lately. So I have in here, you know, an affordable in quotes, because often when we talk about housing and affordable housing, that tends to be the focus. But really, what, what is happening in Rockland is, is an overall housing conversation. So just some background before I get into some of the more specifics. You know, a balanced community or resilient community really focuses its energy on, and its efforts on housing. It's more than affordable housing. It's ensuring that there's a diverse housing stock in the community, that the housing meets the needs, the growing needs of a community and its changing population, that it builds sustainable housing, especially this day and age. And that it maintains and ensures affordable housing throughout the community. And Rockland has, you know, taken, taken a lot of steps to ensure that. In fact, over the past few years, as recent as this year, the community adopted the Rockland Housing Production Plan as well as the Master Plan. So the Housing Production Plan is in effect or, or is in effect from two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty-one. It established housing production goals, primarily focused on preserving affordability, increasing the housing stock for low to moderate income households. It also did a health assessment as it relates to housing. And then it set forth goals and strategies for affordable housing within Rockland. As you, this board is aware, you all adopted the master, Rockland's Master Plan twenty-thirty. So that's a plan that sets out a roadmap for the next ten years in Rockland. Did cover housing. And this was a focus on, you know, providing and exploring options for all ages. The Master Plan analyzed housing trends, assessed housing needs of Rockland residents, took in input from community members as well, and also set forth some key findings. When we're talking about housing, it is really important to understand what the demographics are in a town, because the housing decisions and decisions that affect housing that this board and other boards make are affecting your population. So right now, about just shy of forty-one percent of all Rockland households are categorized as low income. Within that forty percent, forty percent are considered very low income. The median income in Rockland for homeowners is ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. For renters, it's forty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. School enrollment between nineteen, the school years of nineteen ninety-four and nineteen ninety-five through two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen was down fifteen point one percent. On the other hand, senior population by twenty-thirty in Rockland is expected to reach forty-five percent. And those two statistics really are not unique to Rockland. They're a trend that is being seen and recognized throughout the Commonwealth. But again, it's, it's important, they're important statistics when thinking about existing housing stock and where to focus efforts on additional development. This slide you may have seen before. You know, it's important to know our Rockland residents' housing cost burden. And in fact, that is the case. Almost forty-two percent of all renters are cost burdened and almost thirty-two percent of all homeowners are cost burdened. Some percentage of those are very or extremely cost burdened. A household is cost burdened when they are expending thirty percent or more of their household's income on housing costs alone. So I just wanted to go over some of the Housing Production Plan goals and strategies that were set forth and adopted. They included creating opportunities to develop a diverse housing stock. They call for a goal of encouraging affordable housing development to achieve, exceed and maintain forty-B's ten percent goal. So within a community, the state subsidized housing inventory requires or recommends that each community have ten percent of its overall housing stock restricted as affordable housing for those households at eighty percent of the area median income or less. It also set out a goal for developing strategies to ensure preserved affordability, to review and revise zoning bylaws to remove barriers and create incentives, to identify sites for development, leverage existing funding sources to meet existing and future housing needs, as well as to ensure staffing capacities for implementation. Since the Housing Production Plan was adopted, Rockland has actually made some pretty impressive strides towards meeting some of these goals. The town has adopted a forty-R district in its downtown. It has supported local action units. It actually, right now, in terms of working towards that ten percent forty-B goal or subsidized housing inventory is at six point four percent. So while the community is not yet at ten percent, it is doing relatively well in comparison to other municipalities at six point four percent. In recent or upcoming proposed zoning changes, the town has made concerted efforts to ensure that there are affordable units included in some of the larger scale development and that there are appropriate restrictions placed on those units. It has, the town's also identified and continues to meet with developers on potential development sites throughout the community. The Housing Production Plan also identified housing needs and the demand assessment. So on the demand side, it note, it notes an aging population, as I stated earlier. So again, by twenty-thirty, over forty-five percent of the households are estimated to be age sixty or older. That's a significant portion. And so it's important to make sure that there is housing, a housing stock to accommodate that age group. Also, as noted, affordability is important where forty-two percent of renters are, are housing cost burdened and thirty-two percent of homeowners are housing cost burdened. And again, out of the seven thousand, approximate seven thousand, thirty housing units within Rockland, four hundred and fifty-three of those units are on the state subsidized housing inventory or six point four percent. And I know we often get the question, how are we only at sixty, six point four percent? Or why there are only four hundred and fifty-three affordable units? We have way more than that in Rockland. That may be, but if a unit is not restricted as affordable and for a specific time period, it is not included on that inventory list.
Jen, can you just say, can you just say that again?
Sure. So I, often we get the question, you know, how, how has Rockland not met a ten percent threshold? In order for a unit to be counted on the state subsidized housing inventory, it needs to be deed restricted and it needs to be deed restricted as affordable. That household has to be qualified at a certain income and that restriction has to be for a minimum amount of, of time.
So how does, how does a owner of a house or a rental property go about applying for that deed restriction?
I don't know that, I mean, they, I don't know if a specific homeowner could.
Not a homeowner per se, but if, if somebody, a multifamily unit that isn't necessarily, you know, specifically listed as affordable for a, a certain amount of time.
Uh, I don't know, to be honest. I might defer to Judy on, on that one if she doesn't mind chiming in.
No, I don't mind at all. So first of all, if you own a multifamily property and you've got a mortgage on it, you would have to have the agreement of your lender before you put a restriction on the property that would limit its value. And most people generally would not do that. So typically the restriction occurs in the permitting process. So I'm building a project, doesn't exist yet. I'm agreeing as part of getting the permit that I'm going to put a restriction on this property. Now the lenders going into it know that that's a condition of, of the loan, if you will. But that's why you don't see much in the, you know, the sort of existing stock becoming SHI eligible, so-called.
Well, I think that's, that's, that's a big misconception that I think people have where they say, well, how do we not have ten percent? We have all these, these, you know, potential, you know, whatever they are, multifamilies or, or we have plenty of affordable housing stock. How are we not at ten percent? But, but to drill down to that specific, you know, line that I had to repeat twice, I mean, that's, that's really what it comes down to. They're just not, they're not, they didn't commit prior to the beginning of, you know, the lending process.
Right, right.
Right. Thanks for the clarification on that. That's great going forward.
Thank you, Judy. Yeah, and Mike, the, the restrictions are really, you know, that's the part about preserving affordability. And that's what the state wants to see.
But I think a lot of people, like I said, they, it was my misconception at one point. I mean, how is it that we don't have affordable, you know, housing? But it's just that they're not, you know, deed restricted, you know?
So, yeah, one of the questions, not to further digress, but I think this is relevant. We're really dealing with the sins of, actually prior of Rockland leadership in some ways as well. And I say that because if you look around town, oh, there are developments. There were units like the Emerson Shoe Loss, for example, that, oh, if of that the leadership of the town actually back in the day, when that project was being permitted, that would have been a great candidate, you know, for forty-B. And then we could have counted those units in our count as well, correct? So like, actually, I think, like, based on Larry's work on the Housing Production Plan, like, we've been trying to do a lot of forward thinking in terms of how we go forward in these type of initiatives, correct?
We are actually, and it's, you know, once we get to our ten percent, then we can slow down the addition of any more new, new projects. But we have, we have to get it started. Unfortunately, when we first put this production plan in place, we were expected to have things done on in the center of a town down on Park Street. The old building being torn down, was supposed to be torn down, the other one that burned down. And they had potentially, we were gonna put a friendly forty-B in there, would, would have gave downtown more access to people and that live in the neighborhood, maybe use the facilities downtown more to their advantage. Especially in the day and age when driving is gonna be, you know, gas prices are gonna go way up and everything else. But, but unfortunately, that project failed. So it, it left a lot of things open. And then, and then the one at the end of Norman Street was originally gonna be senior housing. And, and now I, I guess it's gonna be senior housing and housing for vets, from what I hear. But again, that was another one that, you know, everybody doesn't want it in their neighborhood, and I understand that. But unfortunately, the state doesn't really care about that. They don't, um, they're not looking at individuals living on the street area, they're looking at the town as a whole and the, and the general population as a whole and how much housing can we afford. Uh, a lot of the issues that, that even these forty Bs are going to have in, in the one behind, uh, Home Depot is water and sewer and, and, and all that other stuff, that those all have to be worked out. With our aging infrastructure that we have both in the sewer and the water departments, I mean, we, how are we going to a, a, attack them? How are we going to attach them to, uh, and, and add so much more to what we're trying to do when we don't have it? So the long range future of these things may be in limbo, doing those restrictions, but, um, neighbors in the area have to, uh, if they, if they want to protest, it have to really gather, gather their forces together and, and present as a neighborhood of, uh, you know, four or five hundred people, depending on where you, where you live and what you're and, and let the state know how you feel about them because uh, it, it's tough to, to wanna, um, you want to do what the state wants you to do. You, you want to have affordable housing, but you want to be able to put it in places where it's appropriate and fits in with the neighborhood needs and, and doesn't stand out like a sore thumb and, uh, uh, you know, on a, on a bad day, you know?
Yeah, Mike, if I.
So I think we hijacked Jen. Sorry, Jen.
Thanks, Mike. That's okay. I was going to say, I am actually going to talk a little more. I'm going to talk specifically about forty B in a moment. Um, but just, I just wanted to wrap up this slide quickly because the production plan did identify the housing needs in Rockland and identified a need for a hundred and sixty five new multifamily units by twenty twenty and a hundred and fifty six new single family units by twenty twenty. Um, an additional two hundred and fifty subsidized housing inventory units would get the community, um, to ten percent. So I'm going to talk a little bit about forty B because I know it has been, um, a kind of front and center uh, discussion point in the community as of late. So chapter four, me to give you a little bit of background and I'm going to talk about the process. Um, chapter forty B was enacted in nineteen sixty nine. It's also known as the comprehensive permit law. Uh, it's one of the Commonwealth's, you know, affordable housing tools that it has in its, its toolbox, so to speak. The statute allows for eligible, affordable developments to receive a comprehensive permit, which means that it could, even if a project requires waivers of local zoning, it could proceed forward. We talked about the ten percent S H I threshold, um, communities that have met that threshold have more discretion to reject a forty B proposal. Those under the threshold do not have as much discretion. And often if a forty B project in a community below the ten percent threshold is denied, it will often, as well as the community find itself at housing appeals, um, court. And the odds are, tend to be in favor of the developer in those scenarios. I also wanted to be very clear and clarify that the zoning board of appeals is the local permitting authority. Um, it is not the board of selectmen. It is the, the Z B A. In a forty B project of the overall project, at least twenty five percent of the units must be priced as affordable to households at or below the eighty percent area median income. Or twenty percent of the units, at least twenty percent of the units must be priced as affordable to households considered low income, fifty percent of the area median income or lower. In any case, a hundred percent of the units of a development are counted towards that threshold. So if you have a project of with a hundred units and twenty five percent of those units are affordable, the seventy five of them are market rate, the town still gets to count a hundred units towards the ten percent threshold. So what is the process for forty B from start to finish? It takes a developer to initiate the process. Um, the developer creates the, the project concept and a preliminary feasibility analysis and then selects a subsidizing agency. Um, this, for example, is mass housing as, as we've seen lately. Uh, the developer submits a project eligibility letter, also known to, known as a P L, application to that subsidizing agency and simultaneously to the municipality. The subsidizing agency reviews the P L application for completeness. Um, if it's complete, the agency then notifies the community, gives it a thirty day period to submit comments. The agency will schedule a site visit pre-COVID. That's typically done with, um, municipal leadership and department heads. Uh, right now it's done separately, but there is still a site visit that's, that's performed. And then a project eligibility letter will issue to the community and the developer if the, if the subsidizing agency makes necessary findings outlined in the forty B regulations. Once that occurs, the developer then prepares their comprehensive permit application, submits it to the municipality. Again, the Z B A will publish notice, schedule and hold a public hearing and ultimately issue a decision. But before they get to their decision, this is the opportunity for municipality, um, neighborhoods, residents to weigh in on a project. The town has the ability and in Rockland typically, if not always, will pull in peer review consultants to do peer review for, um, anything from financial feasibility to engineering, architecture. Um, right now, we also brought in a technical, a forty B technical assistant, um, consultant and as is the role that Judy serves to the municipality. Once the hearing closes, um, and the issue, the decision is issued, if it's approved, the developer then prepares their final approval application and submits that application to the subsidizing agency. Um, they then execute a regulatory agreement. Again, assuming that the subsidizing agency approves the developer's final approval application, the developer will prepare their final engineering architectural plans. They'll have to satisfy any of the conditions that were placed, um, on them by the zoning board of appeals. And then we'll file for a building permit. Um, and then the project is off to development. So I think I'm, I can pause, actually, what, I have two more slides, so it's okay, Mike. I'll go through the presentation and then come back to questions.
Your honor, go.
Okay. And, and just again, if the project is denied, that could be the end of the project or the developer could pursue an appeal with the housing app, um, appeals committee, which is at the state level. So just touching upon quickly the Rockland master plan twenty thirty, the recommendations out of the master plan were that Rockland align its housing goals with other town goals to achieve synergies between local business civic cult and cultural um, opportunities, explore smaller lot, shared open space, pocket neighborhood subdivisions as another affordable downsizing option. So when we talk about an aging population, often communities will need a place for those households to downsize to. And continue to address affordability through inclusionary zoning, C P A and affordable housing trust funds. These are recommendations which, um, the town has actually already made some progress with. So for example, aligning housing goals with other town goals to achieve those synergies, um. You know, as I mentioned earlier, the town's adopted a forty R district that is supporting its local downtown, local businesses um, by, by adding housing into the downtown area. We are working with a potential developer in creating an overlay district and making sure that that overlay includes a requirement for affordable units and, and affordable units that could be counted, um, on the S H I. As well as making sure that, you know, housing production in mixed use development, for example, is in line with what the community is trying to achieve with its overall economic development goals. And then just lastly, um, in continuing to address affordability through inclusionary zoning, Community Preservation Act funding and Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the community, since the housing production plan, um, did in fact adopt Community Preservation Act, um, which includes, as the board's aware, an affordable housing funding component or bucket, um, as it's often referred to, and has used C P A money to support its low to moderate income households. I want to take this opportunity just to update the board on the rental assistance program, uh, which was passed at town meeting to support households affected by COVID. We have actually recently decided to reprogram those funds. Um, and it's actually for a good reason. The state, both at the state and federal level, there has been a significant amount of, of funding funneled to assist both renters and homeowners and there really wasn't the need to use the C P A funds. Um, so as I mentioned, we will, you know, it'll be a future discussion on how we reprogram and re, reprogram those funds. And then the last, um, thing I want to mention is just a recommendation that the town consider exploring establishing a municipal affordable housing trust fund, um, as it looks towards future development or, you know, future rental assistance programs, first time home buyer programs that would come into play at that point. So that is all I have on housing and affordable housing.
Jen, that, uh, that's, that's, that's great. That, I think you pretty much answered every question that I had, uh, in, in regards to it. And, and you know, I, I wanted it specifically to be on this agenda tonight. You know, we've had a lot of, uh, obviously some, some forty B projects that have come through the town, uh, recently. And we, as members of the Board of Selectmen, who, to your point, are not the permitting authority, uh, have been asked a lot of questions, uh, as, as it pertains to what our feedback is and what we're doing about it, uh, to, to either support or prevent whatever, whatever it might be or what our thoughts are on it. And, you know, I think it's, it's important that that the residents have this information, uh, available to them. So, I mean, at least we have this moment in time that we can, we can point to as an information session for the residents of Rockland to, to really get a good grasp as to what, uh, what this legislation or what this, you know, zoning by law or, uh, permitting process is, uh, for a forty B project. Because, I mean, there are so many misconceptions out there. I, I know, you know, and I've been talking to Rich about it, Rich has been, you know, uh, in the crosshairs, you know, quite a bit as far as being asked, you know, questions and, and, and comments. And I know Doug is going to speak specifically about a, uh, another property that recently came under forty B, uh, application. So, uh, if anybody on the board has any questions or comments for Jen or in regards, uh, I'd say try to stay away from specific, uh, projects that might be before one of our boards or committees at the time, but anything that is not is fair game. So, uh, that, any questions or comments?
The only comment I have is Jen, uh, very nicely done. I, I think, um, how you put that together and Judy, thank you. Um, I think this helps um, give a, a clearer understanding of, uh, how the affordable housing in Rockland and, and in, uh, the forty B. You know, and, and I understand right now with a multitude of forty B, uh, projects that are, um, being discussed or, or in the stages. I, I mean, I, I don't, I can't personally remember as many, um, active forty B projects in the town at this point. And I think one of the things is the town is attractive, you know? Um, the things that have been done, uh, over the last decade, I think has made the town more attractive to developers coming in. And while we want to attract developers coming in, both residential and commercial, uh, to help the tax base, to, to help the, the town grow, have the affordability of the housing, you know? I, I don't know who, I forget who it was who said it. It's, at the end of the day, I think it was Larry, you know? You don't want it in your backyard and I fully understand that. But also, you know, the residents, um, need to be aware of what, um, what vehicles that they have to, um, to fight, um, forty Bs if they feel that, um, they need to do that. Uh, and I, and I think this presentation kind of laid that, that roadmap out for them, you know, and certainly, you know, Larry had, had mentioned gathering groups. Write your legislator right into the state. Um, I think those are the, the best, some of the best, um, vehicles that they can use, um, to, uh, certainly, you know, uh, attend the, the Z B A meetings. Um, those are all the things that, that they can do to, to try to, um, help fight, uh, that project if they, if they feel that's necessary.
Thank you, Rich. Mike?
Uh, yeah, uh, two things. Number one, um, thank you, Jen, first of all. Thank you, Judy, for all your continued efforts for the town as well. Um, this, this, number one, it's been pretty clear that we as a board, we don't have a role in this process. However, there are other, uh, town departments, uh, they were separately elected and appointed, um, and separately held departments like the water and sewer department are that, um, actually have been involved, that can be involved in, um, and are regularly involved in these processes. Um, and, uh, for very good reason. Um, and I think we all, um, expect uh, them to continue to be involved and they have been. There's engineering that goes on, that they're the subject matter experts, oh, you know, and their guidance, their wisdom, their technical expertise. Oh, is caught upon a, along with the technical expertise, um, of the state regulatory and permitting all agencies as well, like D E P, uh, like in other entities. So I think, oh, like those entities are, oh, in my opinion, and I think by regulation and law, um, actually the entity that should be involved in, are involved in these processes. Oh, and actually piggybacking on Rich's point in terms, um, like of the state, like of the, of the state, um, of the state, um, in the state legislation, um, all, I cannot, all local legislators. Um, I think there's, uh, this, oh, you know, this misnomer out there, oh, you know, that I know, um, oh, you know, there have been residents reaching out, oh, you know, to one of our legislators. Um, and the legislator, um, is actually encouraging residents to contact the Board of Selectmen. Um, I would say respectfully that our residents have, uh, issues with, um, with Mass General Law, Chapter forty B. Uh, the key person to help actually push for changes uh, when Massachusetts General Law forty B is actually a state legislator himself. And, oh, you know, I mean, oh, you know, and, and I think, oh, and I would like some more and hope in the future for some more actual honest dialogue in terms of where things are with forty B. Oh, if you're going to support one forty B, not support another, oh, that's our kind of a contrary, a contrary position about the whole premise of forty B to take. And, uh, you know, I mean, I think we all agree, anyone, I'll actually agrees forty B as a law actually needs to be updated. And I think, oh, you know, uh, when residents reach out to our state legislators about their concerns about the implementation, I'll actually about the implementation of forty B, uh, that those, that those concerns are actually advanced through legislation um, and not actually punted back through the town, which is in essence just dealing with the implementation of a a law that needs a lot of work and updates to begin with. So I'll leave it there, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mike. Larry, any comments?
I think I've already said enough.
Fair enough. So Doug, if you, if you could, just for a few minutes, just kind of, you know, take some of this stuff, obviously, that Jen presented, uh, and just, you know, kind of walk us through, uh, the most recent forty B project to come to town potentially.
Sure, Mike. Thanks. And, uh, I thought Jen did a great job. So it's a tough act to follow, but I'll just sort of bring it down to a specific project. And this, this one is, you know, a little bit unique because it involves a, a, a tax title parcel. So I, I won't get into any of the history at three twenty Concord Street because you all know it better than me and it's, you know, um, And it's, you know, um, was going on for many years. Um, but the bottom line was, you know, the town had uh taken the parcel for debt, for back taxes. So uh the town owned it and we own the structure that was on it, um, which as it stood was, was non-conforming. Um, and it was non-conforming for lack of frontage, lot width and total lot area. So, and, you know, the property was vacant. There had been a fire there at one point. And not only is it not producing tax revenue for the town, you know, there's a great liability for the town, whether it's, you know, people breaking in, people getting injured, whether it's catching on fire or just turning into blight, you know, for the neighbors. So, you know, I know there's been a lot of chatter out in the public and, um, you know, accusations of, you know, backroom deals and follow the money. And these are all just horrible, horrible comments. And I want to just, you know, reject them as clearly as I can because they're offensive for the professionalism that everybody worked, everybody who works in this building, as well as the, you know, the, the volunteers that serve in the Board of Selectmen and all the other boards and committees. So it was, you know, a very transparent, you know, process. It involved um the sale at auction, um, was a process that involved myself, you know, the Board of Selectmen, the elected town treasurer, it involved our land use council and involved our tax title attorney. So there's, you know, many, uh, many eyes on this. Um, it was a very public process, you know, it's advertised extensively, et cetera. Uh, so I guess the first thing I'd want to say is, you know, the, the first auction that we had, uh, the minimum bid was only $2,500. So for only $2,500, you know, anybody could have bought that parcel, uh, including, you know, what we hoped would have been, you know, potentially one of the abutters, either to just, you know, extend their, their acreage, extend their, you know, their area, maybe use that the structure as an accessory dwelling. Or maybe, you know, a parcel behind it could have used it for access. There were a number of different things. Or maybe somebody else off the street could have bought it and made the lot conforming. This is another big misconception. They um have heard in, from some folks in the public that it's a non-buildable lot. And there was no way to address that. But we made it very clear in our written advertising materials that the lot as it currently stood lacks sufficient frontage, lot width and, and lot area. But it could be rectified and it could be rectified if two of the abutters, one abutter did not have any land that they could give up because it would have made their lot non-conforming. But if two other abutters agreed um to give up a little bit of land with compensation, it could have made the lot buildable. So that was certainly another option in addition to one of the abutters purchasing it for their own use. Somebody else off the street could have purchased the lot and could have made it uh with the agreement of the abutters, a buildable lot. And uh within the, the terms of our auction, we gave 90 days for that to occur. And if that um couldn't occur, then the structure would have to be removed. Now, another option of, is always, you know, having an affordable uh housing project on a site. And that's another criticism we've received is we've opened the floodgates or opened Pandora's box. And that's just not true. That's always an option for anybody um that could purchase a lot. So what we did in this instance is we had a parcel that was not generating any income to the town, had a very large liability to the town, would have cost us at least $25,000 to remove the structure, still leaving a slab. We ended up auctioning it a second time again because no one bought it at the first auction. And we, we brought in $39,000 for the sale of the parcel. So another question we've had is how could this new buyer um propose four houses on a lot if it's not buildable for even one lot? And again, as Jen laid out in, in such good detail in her presentation, uh, if a project has at least 25% of the homes that would be deeded of, uh, affordable, so one out of the four homes under Mass General Law, Chapter 40B, they can apply for certain waivers and exemptions. So that's always been the case. So if the original owner previously had wanted to do that, they could have done that. It's not some special deal that was negotiated. That's always the case, you know, anywhere in town. So, you know, the, the tentative initial plan from the, the purchaser is uh four separate structures, four homes with a shared driveway, one would be affordable, three would be market. So you got to think three market rate homes, these are going to be attractive, you know, nice looking homes. And, and, you know, we'll, we'll see how it plays out. But I just, uh, I just can't stress enough that this has been, you know, done in strict accordance with the law. Um, it's been above board in, in every respect. And it could have had many other outcomes. Again, the abutters could have bought it. The abutters, I suppose, still could buy it if maybe they, they talked to this developer, maybe they'd be willing to sell it. I have no idea. But there were many different, you know, potential outcomes that we could have had. We were all um surprised when it didn't sell at the first auction for only 2,500. And then at the section, at the second auction, it sold for 39,000, you know, so. But that's, that, that's how we got here. I, I hope that's, I hope that's some helpful clarification. And maybe the, the main point I'll close with again, because I've just, I've already said it, but I wanted to say it one more time because I've, I've heard it said so many times. You know, how can four houses be put on a lot if, if, if it's a non-buildable lot for even one home? And again, the answer is because under state law, if 25% of the, of the homes are affordable or deeded affordable, permanently restricted, then they're allowed to request certain waivers and exemptions for things like frontage and lot width, et cetera. That's the answer. So I, I hope that's helpful. I'll try to answer anything else if I can. And Judy, feel free to correct me if you think I've mischaracterized anything.
That was great. It was very clear.
Crystal, uh, I, I do want to go back to Jen for a second. I, I think she had a question as well.
Yeah, I, well, I just wanted to um thank Judy for, for joining the call this evening. She had what sounds to be an eternal day. But I wanted the board to know moreover that Judy truly is um an expert in her field. And so the, the town was fortunate to, to bring her on board with um one of the projects as a technical assistant. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you, Judy, for your work on it.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you. Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Judy. Uh, so Doug, so, so in, 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 I think you, you pretty much summed it up, you know, perfectly. That, you know, a 40B application, uh, the, the designation of an unbuildable lot is according to the town of Rockland's uh zoning bylaws. The 40B designation uh circumvents the town of Rockland, has the ability to circumvent the town of Rockland's designation because there's affordable uh component to that property, right?
I mean, yes, of course, the state would use different language. They wouldn't say circumvent, you know, you know, additional flexibility, but yeah, you know where I'm going with this. But the answer is yes, the state law, you know, allows these types of projects to request waivers and exemptions of the local rules so that they don't zone out, you know, more dense projects that can create more affordable units.
Perfect. So what could be a unbuildable lot in the town of Rockland could be a perfectly fine lot in the town of Hanson, Hanover, Norwell, Abington, all of the surrounding towns, because it's all based on whatever that specific municipalities uh bylaws are. So, um, so there's nothing wrong with the lot in the sense of being built. It's just as far as size of the structure that was on that lot, based on what the town's uh bylaws are for it.
I wouldn't say the size of the structure. It was just the fact that the, the lot lacked certain dimensional requirements for any home, right? And maybe the only other point I'd make, Mike, is maybe you or Rich were talking about, you know, lobbying your legislators to amend state law. You know, if you look at the housing choice law that just came out, the state's moving in the opposite direction. They're not looking to, to weaken the law. They're looking to strengthen it and amplify it. As an example, currently all, you know, zoning change is required a two-thirds vote. But with this new housing choice law, they're incentivizing certain things that will facilitate even more dense development to encourage more affordable housing, where required that that can only be done by a simple majority vote, not a two-thirds vote at town meeting. So the state's really moving in the opposite direction from a lot of the, the discussion that you've heard from others in the community. So I just wanted to make that point too.
Thank you, Doug. Anybody have any questions or comments about 320 Concord?
So, yeah, I just want to add, I mean, Doug and Jen, what a phenomenal presentation. Um, and just really the, the criticism, um, the, uh, the, I don't even know how to describe it because it's so frankly, it's so frankly ridiculous and stupid um to be point blank. Uh, but in terms of transparency and how uh you, Doug, and Jen and everyone else at our town hall has been conducting business, uh, this, the explanation tonight, uh, the ex, oh, you know, the presentation uh with the budgets that you give, uh, you both and everything you do have been absolutely nothing but transparent. And that is, that is in my view, very apparent and evident, just, just everything you do. So frankly, don't pay attention to the Facebook warriors because that's all they are.
It's all I was right.
Well, I will say it has gone a little bit beyond that. I mean, we're at the point now that we're getting, you know, I think emails now um pretty much on a daily or, you know, every other day basis, you know, asking to comment on uh some of these, some of these issues that are coming up, so.
Yeah, yeah, like some, yes, and some of the issues are legitimate, um, and some I would argue are just manufactured. I'll just leave it there.
There you go.
Okay. Uh, anybody else have any comments or questions?
The only thing that I'll say is developers can go down this process and put their application in. It doesn't mean that it's going to pass, right? Um, and, and I think people just, they see, um, you know, a developer put in and they're like, how, how does this happen? You know, how does a, how does a large project get, get put behind Home Depot? How does a, you know, an, an unbuildable lot become a 40B? How does a former school, uh, Catholic school become a, a 40B senior housing? How does, you know what I mean? It's, don't, developers can, you know, that's what they're there for, right? They, they purchase, they develop, they can put in all of these applications uh for these projects. It doesn't mean it's a done deal, right? When it's a 40B, it's difficult for the town to fight it, but there are cases throughout the state that 40Bs have been, have been denied. You know, and I'll reiterate what we said earlier, you know, if you're against it, the best thing you can do as citizens is to mobilize, voice your concerns, attend the ZBA meetings, contact your legislators, fight it as best that you can. Um, because it's, it's not a done deal just because an application goes in.
Good point. I, I will say as well, you know, as, as a board, we've been advised uh by, by town council to not really issue, you know, public statements in regards to any specific projects uh as it could be grounds for an appeal uh on any decision made by one of our boards or committees. Um, you know, however, I have had some people reach out to me and to tell me about uh towns that have had the ability to uh defeat, you know, big 40B projects. And, and in every one of those cases that somebody reached out, they, they referenced that the selectmen were closely involved. Well, that, that actually isn't really the case. You know, I, I spoke to a couple of selectmen that were in some of the towns that were suggested in some of the emails I received. I spoke to uh one gentleman who's been chairman in that town and was cited in the newspaper article that I found. And he said that really the, the board took no position on it. None of them spoke for or against the project. What they did is they provided a public information session, which is what I asked Jen to do tonight because we have COVID and stuff, well, we don't have COVID, but COVID is going on. And, you know, I, I wanted to make sure that we had this available to the residents. It's, it's an information session on 40B so that they have the ins and outs of it. And I think Jen provided just that. Uh, the, the next step that the board did is all they did was, and we're in different times. So I, I don't envision us having the ability to do this at any point. But they invited the developers of that project, the applicants, to present to them and the members of the community. And in this particular case, uh, 800 members of that community showed up to let those developers uh know what they thought about that project. And it was enough that mass housing took, took a look at it, you know, they, they heard the noise and, and they looked at it and they dug deeper and, and they didn't think the project was appropriate for that location and the scale in which they were uh proposing. So, um, you know, we're, we're doing what we've been advised to do, you know, we, we, we definitely have opinions. But uh, you know, it's in the best interest of the town of Rockland overall uh for us to follow the recommendation of town council on this, you know? And I see Judy nodding. Judy, you've got some, a lot of experience in, in this field. Have you known any scenarios where, where the selectmen are actively trying to uh defeat a project publicly?
Well, actually, the one case I do know, it really backfired and complicated things for the Board of Appeals later. So I, I just completely agree, you know, thus the select board, making sure people have information is the most important thing that you can do. Um, making sure the staff um have the time to, you know, review the applications of the plans and provide the ZBA with comments. Um, that's a very important thing as well. But it really is best to let the ZBA handle this process. And I think, you know, town council's been great and the board is trying very hard. It's really the best I can say at this point.
Judy, thank you for your time.
No problem.
Uh, and with that, uh, any further discussion on the topic? Anybody?
No.
Okay. Mike said no, so we'll move on. Uh, next on the agenda, uh, May 3rd, 2021 Town Meeting Warrant. Did we already do that?
Thanks, Mike. No, we, we didn't do it. Um, the only update I have for you tonight, and I'm just going to find the exact warrant article number, I'm just looking at it now. Is we had, uh, here it is. So it's, um, I think I would have done this before you uh called on me. Um, here we go. It's Article 11 uh from the latest draft of the annual town meeting warrant, which I emailed you all earlier. So, um, what happened is our original plan was, um, as part of our effort to save funding uh to purchase the new fire truck, which we desperately need, was to transfer 85,000 from an unexpended article from last annual town meeting that was uh going to be the first sort of lease payment for a, a fire truck at the fire department that we ended up not purchasing. So we were going to transfer the, you know, amend that article to transfer those unexpended funds into the capital stabilization fund that we're going to be creating at the annual town meeting. So the only change to the warrant from the last version you've seen until now is we're changing that number from 85,000 and we're dropping it to 45,000. And the remainder, the 40,000, in working with Jen, we realized that as we finished up the master plan, we have a $40,000 invoice um for MAPC um per their contract that was signed a couple of years ago, um, which we thought there was an appropriation already in place to pay. Um, but it turns out there wasn't. So we need to come up with the additional 40,000 for the remainder of that work. So this is kind of, we were made aware of this so late in the game, this we think is the best way to fund it because we really squeezed every other nickel at every other account we can. So there'll be an additional article at the special town meeting um to, to pay this, to, to fund eight 40,000 coming out of that old appropriation. And we're dropping the 85,000 down to 40,000. Other than that, everything's the same. Um, pending any last minute budget changes that we're going to discuss later this week. Um, and town council's in the process of reviewing the, the warrant. So that's why I'm not asking for any votes tonight. I want to get that final version back from John Clifford, you know, hopefully we can, uh, I, I'd like to have you guys vote it either on the 23rd, I'm just looking at my calendar, either at the 23rd meeting or on April 6th at the latest.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, other old business, not reason we anticipated?
I have none.
Uh, Town Ministers' Report and Correspondence.
Sure. So I just have a couple of things. I'll keep it quick because it's late. Uh, one thing I did want to mention, uh, sticking with the fire department theme is um, we have uh executed a contract with a consultant for our fire response time study, which we've been talking about for a while. So again, the intent of this study is we have an expert consultant that's going to help us analyze all our runtime data, um, everything relating to the operations for the fire department to understand if we're still okay getting by with just one fire station for the entire town, or if we really should be looking at having a, a second substation in another part of town. And that's really critical because that's going to help us, that's going to help inform us uh if we just need one large new building or if we can get by with, you know, maybe one new smaller substation and renovating our current headquarters as a, as a substation. So we've engaged that consultant and their work should be done um by mid-July at the latest. So we'll keep you updated on that. Um, also just wanted to mention, we did a, a bunch of work um with the school building committee on reviewing the, the bids for the, the, the general contractor. And very pleased that the building committee was able to award that contract. And I probably won't say anymore on that now because, you know, Rich Penny will probably want to speak about it a little bit more since he's really most involved with that. But, you know, we have been doing our, our part to help move that project along. Lastly, I just want to thank two people really in particular. One is Sue Hyde here in my office. Not only is she doing all her normal work, but she's been helping the Town Clerk's Office. They've been really inundated with all kinds of census information as well as dog licenses coming in. And they really needed the help because they've been really short-staffed. Instead of three people, they're only down to down to two people right now. And related to that, I want to really thank Liza and Christine and the Clerk's Office because they are working really hard. They're working, literally working overtime to help get the job done while they're short-staffed. And so we, you know, we certainly anticipate after the local election in April, then we'll be able to hire the third person again and and get them back up to their full staffing complement. But thanks to Sue for helping out, and thanks for Liza and Christine for keeping it going. And then lastly, I want to thank our Animal Control Officer Davidson. You know, I I think you all know it already, but he really does an incredible job. You know, his customer service is outstanding. And in a lot of towns, animal control officers generate a lot of complaints. And I literally have not gotten a single complaint about animal control since I've been here. And on the contrary, I get accolades frequently about the service delivered, including recent things I've just learned about him actually bringing pet food to needy households, you know, picking it up and personally delivering it to households, which is just amazing. I don't know any other community that does that kind of thing. So I just want to thank Animal Control Officer Davidson because he does an outstanding job. And that's all I have.
That's awesome. Thanks, Doug. Selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen. Now, the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mr. Mullen.
I talked a lot, so I'll keep it brief. I don't have anything.
Love it. Mr. Penny.
So I've got a couple of things. So one, Doug talked about the school project. So you know, timing seems to be on our side again on this project like it was on the first project. But this time even more so. So we we got the bids, as as Doug alluded to, and the bids came in substantially below what the estimates were. Ten million dollars below what the estimate was, which is significant. It's a significant reduction in the cost that that the taxpayers in this town are going to see. And I think that's tremendous news. You know, they came out, they supported this project, they were willing to to pay the money for it. And we've already seen two, two things work in our side. The first is, the first bond that was issued came in significantly lower from an interest rate than what we had estimated. And that's, that's going to reduce the overall cost. And now we've seen every, you know, a budget come in ten million dollars under. So we are, we are going to build this school for significantly less than what we had originally thought. So that's, that's great news. I have two other things. So for the first time, I've I've had some personal accusations. So I'm a big boy. I'm I'm fine. I've been accused over the last two weeks of being on the take, complicit in in things going on in the town, that I have personally endangered our residents. And I'm okay. People want to want to make those accusations. That's fine. The only thing that I would wish is that these people actually did their homework and knew what they were talking about. So if I really was on the take, I'm doing a piss-poor job because I don't have anything to show for it. As far as personally endangering the residents, anyone who have known me for my fifty six years in this town, I think it's laughable. But the thing that really has has irritated me because, again, I'm a big boy. You want to make make accusations, that's fine. But keep the comments away from my family. That is where you always step the line. You get a personal issue with me, call me, email me. Just about everybody has my cell phone number. Call me up, do it to my face. I have no problem with that. But keep the comments away from my family. The only other thing that I have to say on 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 this was in our last meeting with when we were talking about the appointment on the with the with the senior center, the only thing that I'll ask of this board, continue to always keep things professional. Never let it get personal. I thought that some of the comments that were made were close to or may have crossed the line. I just want to remember, remind everyone on on this board, always, always keep it professional. That's it.
Thank you, Rich. Suckman Ryan, any comments?
No, I just want to thank our staff for the great job they're doing for the Town of Rockland. And I want to just, you know, back up Doug and Rich and Mike and you and the rest of us. We're we're working hard for the Town of Rockland. Not everybody agrees on every issue that comes along, and and a lot of people are impatient for whatever their issue is, whether it be the COVID thing or or something else that's going on in town. But I want you to know that this board, this town, this administration is working hard for every resident to get as much of the Rockland experience as they can. And we're working toward making sure that all residents are happy with with what they have. And and those people who have to get on public media and badmouth us or or make statements that really aren't true. You know, I got some Limburger to go with that bad wine you got, you know? If you're going to, if you're going to have a bad wine, have something that stinks to go along with it. So I got a nice shot of Limburger for all of yous who like the wine out loud. And with that, have a nice evening, and we'll see you next week.
Thank you, Larry. Yeah. I I got nothing. No, I'm I'm with you. I just, you know, I don't even know where to comment at at this point. You know, I think you guys, Rich, you know, I'm I'm sorry, you know, that that you have to go through that. And
Don't be sorry. I signed up for it. I'm good. Just stay away from my family.
Yeah, and I I I'm sorry that your family has to go through that. You know, when when you and I talked a couple of years ago about you joining this board, you were doing doing us, the Town of Rockland, I I think, a great favor in in stepping up at a time that we need you to. And for for things to get, to get that that misguided and 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 personal and and just just completely off off base. I mean, just absolutely inappropriate, you know. There there's no one that I I know that that, you know, works harder. And look, you and I, we've we've always gone along, but, you know, there's been times that we haven't agreed on things. But but I I think you you come from a place where, you know, you've always got Rockland's best interests in mind. And and it's Rockland's best interest. It's not Rich Penny's best interest. It's what's best for the town. And and I thank you for that, you know, and I don't, it's unfortunate. I don't think people realize that about you, that that everything you do is, you know, you you've got a you've got a an interesting thought process. And and I pick your brain a lot because sometimes I I think I've got something figured out. I'll call you and and I I feel like that, like, I feel like an idiot. And I know that's not your point, you know, trying to, but I I'm just shocked that I haven't thought of it that way. Like, how didn't I get to that conclusion? And 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 I've always appreciated you for that as far back as our years on on the Finance Committee. And and it's just, it's just really, really disheartening. And and I've I've been feeling the heat as well. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of people, you know, pushing back against us. And and hopefully, they'll actually take the time to watch Jen's presentation, Doug's comments about three twenty conquered shirt, and just just understand, we we are here. We're here to help people, you know. But we're also residents in this town. You know, we're also taxpayers in this town. None of us are making decisions for us, you know, for that that benefit us. You know, we're making decisions that affect us as well. You know, it's not just, oh, well, you know, raise taxes on those, it's on us, you know, or or put this there. I mean, everything we do affects us as well. So we're we're making the decisions. We've been voted, you know, by the members of the community to to make the decisions for what's what we think is best at the time. And, you know, anytime we put together a warrant, any articles that we put on there, you know, school building projects, we we just vote to see if it's something worthy for the town to vote on. That's it. We just put it out there, decide whether it's something that that we think the residents of town, you know, should have a chance to vote on. And if they vote yes for something, great. If they vote no, great, we'll move on. You know, it's it's not personal. Our job is to present the information, present the project to the residents and let them vote. It's not personal for us, and it shouldn't be personal for for them. And it should never cross that line, Rich. And, you know, for for Larry, who's been doing it forever, Mike, who, you know, obviously has been in it for a long time, Cara, myself, you know, and Rich. We didn't get into it for that. You know, we we can definitely take take a fair share of heat, but, you know, we're still residents of this town, and we would appreciate, you know, some of the respect that we afford to the residents in in that case. So with that, I want to take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor. Suckman Mullen.
Yes.
Suckman Penny.
Yes.
Suckman Ryan.
Yes.
And myself. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Hi, everybody.